Put your light on, Mary. So, okay, well, good evening, everyone, or good afternoon. I know it is 6:00 PM, if you all don't mind. I'm Jane Beistessa, and I'm one of the newly appointed individuals. Very proud to be here, very thankful. Can we go ahead and call this meeting to order? Is that okay with everyone? Everyone's okay? We don't have a chair yet, so. You have any problem with that, Joe?
Pardon?
To call the meeting to order, is that okay? We have a quorum.
Yes, we have a quorum.
Okay. All right, so, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 6:01. And having said that, let's do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary, can you do roll call, please?
Yep. And Joe Hutchins?
Here.
Jane Beistessa?
Here.
James Wright?
Here.
Jeffrey Carl?
Here.
Thank you.
So, the only one member that is absent is Cynthia Earl. Did anyone receive a message? She was not going to be able to make it today? Mary, did you ever heard of that?
I did not.
Okay. It is her first time, so maybe she may have misplaced the time, or whatever. But we should make a motion to excuse her.
I'll give a motion to excuse Cynthia Earl from tonight's meeting.
Okay, made by Mr. Hutchins.
I'll second.
Okay, supported by Mr. Wright. All those in favor, let's just do a roll call.
Joe Hutchins?
Yes.
Jane Beistessa?
Yes.
James Wright?
Yes.
And Jeffrey Carl?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Hopefully, she'll walk in in a few minutes. All right, I'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is the agenda. And I need to hear from this board to see if there are any motions to change, or simply approve the agenda as is. Are there any changes? Very good. Before-
Did you want to consider this after the election of officers?
Yes, yes. That's a good point. Thank you, Mary. For the public that's out there, there's an item on our agenda, and it's item number seven, under Old Business. I respectfully request that we address this after item number eight-one, when we do the election of officers. This way, we can decide who's going to be responsible for running, managing the meeting, and moving on from there. Is that okay with everyone? Can we make just that one item change? All right. Having heard no objections, the other thing that I want to say is, as we, because we're still new, some boards like to take a roll call after every item, and some prefer just to hear by voice. Okay? So, for now, I'm just going to do roll call until we make some decisions later on to decide how we're going to do that. Okay? Is that okay with everybody? For right now. Okay, so, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with the one change, to move item number seven-one after item number seven-eight-one?
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Very good.
I second.
Moved by Mr. Wright, and seconded by Carl. Mr. Carl. Roll call, please.
Joe Hutchins?
Yes.
Jane Beistessa?
Yes.
James Wright?
Yes.
And Jeffrey Carl?
Yes.
Motion approved. So, the next item on the agenda is item number five, Commission and Staff Reports. So, should we go around the table here? Or would you want to start? Mary, how do we do this?
I think actually what we should do is introduce our new board members.
Okay, very good.
And that, so, do we want to go around the table? And you can introduce yourselves, or-
That's fine. My name is James Wright, and I'm proud to be in appointed to the board, and looking forward to working with everyone.
Joe?
Oh, me?
Yes.
I'm Joe Hutchins, Commissioner.
Do you want to give any reports or anything?
Pardon?
You know, any reports or anything like that?
No, I have nothing to report.
Okay, very good. I'm Jane Beistessa, and I'm a longtime resident of Holly. I'm very, very excited and pleased to be here with you all. As you can see, we're still learning, so we'll get there. We're going to touch base. We're going to make mistakes, but hopefully, we'll correct them quickly. I know we will. We've met individually, and we've also met together informally. But it was very good. I'm so glad, or at least the impression I got from our last meeting was that we are willing to move forward and to address items as quickly as we can. So, that's, I thought that was very, very positive, so thank you all. The other thing that I want to report is, I don't know if this is the first time, maybe not the first time, but for the audience information, this- And, James, I'm surprised you didn't say anything. Maybe I should turn that over to you. Why don't you give us a report on what we're doing? This is the first time we've done this.
Yeah, I apologize. I thought we were just introducing ourselves. I do have a report. Since I was sworn in, focused on improving the technology here at the Nature Center. Basically, for transparency's sake, I have installed the webcam for the live meetings. We have purchased and installed the wireless microphone system that we're using. And everything seems to be working, hopefully, without a hitch, so.
So, right now, anybody can watch us and can hear us? And these meetings will be recorded, so that we will, anybody who wants to come later, see them?
Both, they are live streaming to our YouTube page, and also being recorded locally, so that we can go back.
Excellent, excellent. Okay. Thank you, James, for all your work, and I know we all appreciate this. So, I know that some, we've heard from some individuals that wanted this type of information available. So, thank you, everybody, and thank you, James, especially for doing this. And we'll continue to improve as we go on. Okay, very good. Mary, why don't you introduce? Oh, I'm sorry, board.
My name's Jeff Carl. I don't know when I start. I think it's been about two and a half years I've been on the board as appointed. Survived the elections, and was reappointed, so happy to be here. As far as comments and updates, I notice we've got our road on the agenda and the water issues out front. I reached out to Robert Montgomery, who has the experience with roads, and he said he'd be here about 6:15, just to let you know. So, when we come to that item on New Business, I think we can address our questions to him rather than us, because what do we know about the roads, right? And I did, last week when we met, we talked about the mission statement. I don't know if anyone brought anything. I did, but I know it's going to be discussed later, the webpage. I don't have an issue if, you know, once we get the webpage, we can easily move with a mission statement. So, I just wanted to mention that as well.
Very good.
Thank you. I did want to bring up first, it has been a few years since we have done an Easter egg hunt, which used to be a really popular event. However, it does take considerable time and effort, and not sure that we have enough time to pull that off this year. So, I wanted to get the board's opinion, now that everybody's in place, as to whether you think this would be a benefit this year, or if we should table it until next year.
I think that it's a wonderful idea if we can pull it off. I'm sure that we can come together and put that forward.
And do an all-nighter putting in the-
Well, it would involve still taking around information to the businesses to see if they would like to contribute. We have a ton of eggs, but they have been stored in the shed, so we're, you know, looking at the possibility of bleaching them and things like that before we actually do it. So, you know, we can do it. It'll just be really time-consuming between now and then, so.
Understand, okay.
Mary, have other organizations have done egg hunts? Where do, if we initiated this based on what we've done in the past, how would you think we would rank versus other organizations and their efforts towards an Easter egg activity?
You know, I'm not sure about that. I know when this was originally done, when I was involved way back, when I was on the board, like Joe said, we, at times, we had up to 6,000 eggs that we would put out, and children and their families used to line up way down the beach, and, you know, the whole deal. But it's been a while since then, and I think more organizations are doing, you know, Easter-type things. I know the churches in town specifically are doing, you know, Easter events and stuff. So, how well it would be attended, especially since we have not done it, you know, recently, but then James has access to our website, so we could put it out there and just see, and that. But what were you thinking?
I just, since we haven't done it in at least three, four years?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
That was before I got involved, so.
I thought, when we discussed this last year at one point, there was mention of another organization, and they had, they were dropping eggs from a helicopter or something. I mean, it was pretty magnanimous, which, not that an egg hunt needs to be, we need to compete, but I, it'd be interesting to do our homework, find out what's out there, maybe? And see if we, is there an opportunity to partner with churches, combined efforts? We certainly have the mass, the property, so to speak. Maybe as opposed to deciding yes or no, maybe we-
Do the research first.
But I hate to wait another month, because we don't have that time.
Yeah, we would have to do it like right now, if we're going to.
So.
But what I could do, if you'd like, as a board, I can at least look into who actually is scheduled currently for an activity. So, that way, we would get an idea of their dates and how many, and then, you know, we could make a decision from there, if you'd like.
How do you feel about that?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's good, you know, for us to take a look at, but can't take much time, because Easter's right around the corner.
Right.
So, if anything, you know, Mary, you can contact us, and, you know, we can say, again, not a vote, but just whether or not it sounds like a good idea or not.
Sure.
But you bring up some good points, Jeff, and I think that, you know, we should look at it. And maybe next year, we can probably work a little better and do it better. I would love to do it now. It would be great, but it makes sense to- It would be great, but, uh, but it makes sense to, for us to take a quick breath and then take a look and see where we are.
I'll take a look, uh, I, I'm not going to be in the office at all tomorrow, but on Friday, I'll start looking into it.
Perfect.
And then go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Um, the other thing, some of the things that we've been working on in the office, many of you know Amy Childers, our former, uh, manager. She is now hired by MSU Extension, uh, for working with a four-H program. And she had reached out, uh, and would like to work with Sorensen Park and Holly Township Parks on a collaboration with, um, also the Northwest Oakland Bee Association because she would like to help, um, facilitate a children's program involving the bees and, um, that. And Donna had already, well, actually Northwest Oakland Bee Association, um, had already, um, in their proposal to us, had suggested that they would like to do a children's program during the summer where they would offer education, have a, um, observation hive for the children to see the bees, actually in a small hive, and to have honey, um, that they could drizzle over ice cream as an activity. So, uh, Amy is going to come on Friday in the afternoon and meet with Jim Fuller and Donna Boshell and I, and, uh, we're going to talk about that collaboration. So we'll report back on that. Also, uh, previously, uh, we had an inspection by the Village of Holly Fire Department and we needed an inspection of our fire system. And in that process, we discovered that our current fire system is obsolete. They can no longer get, um, parts for that. So, um, Commissioner Joe Hutchins has been in contact with the Village of Holly Fire Department and we have determined that we can remove, uh, that fire system with no problem. As, and we chose to install a fire, extra fire extinguisher in the garage. And so that has already been done. Mr. Hutchins put that in. And so now, um, Joe is, uh, reaching out to the Village of Holly Fire Department. They're going to come and inspect and, um, see the steps that we need to take to actually remove the old system. And so, uh, Joe is still working on that. So we have that. Uh, we have a program, um, that we had previously participated in under a different name, which is a jail alternative program. And they would come out and they would provide us with, um, able bodies for, uh, an eight-to-four or, um, nine-to-five, uh, situation on a weekend. And we would provide, um, the tools and that that they would need. And we determined that we would like to have them come and work at the beach on May third. So they are going to come out and they're going to, uh, be raking the beach and moving the picnic tables and possibly even replacing some of the boards for us that are rotted. And if there is time allowed after that, they're going to come over here to Sorensen Park and do additional work. However, uh, we did offer and they accepted for us to, um, provide them lunch. So we'll be, uh, working on that as well. And then another project that, uh, we had initiated was for, um, we put in a request to the Oakland County Road Commission to, um, do two signs for us that would go, uh, hello Cindy? That would go on the signs that are already existing where it says, uh, Falk Road, uh, East Holly Road. And they would say Sorensen Park with an arrow pointing into our park. So, um, we have not heard yet whether they're going to, uh, allow that or not or actually make the signs, but we're still waiting on that. So those are some of the things. And in addition, for staff, uh, we have had Mel, our maintenance person with Zach, doing a lot of, uh, tree work. Mr. Hutchins has, um, actually taken down some of the trees and Mel has done, uh, some of the smaller trees. And so there's been a lot of improvement that way. And for those people who are not familiar, um, I think it's Cooperative Invasive Species Management through Oakland County CISMIA. They came out and they did a winter mowing for us. And so if you look around the Nature Center and also to the back of the park, you'll see some significant, uh, removal of invasives and things like that. And, uh, so we are going to be working on clearing this area further and, uh, we are going to hopefully be having bees coming here and, uh, looking forward to that. So thanks very much and that's my report.
Excellent, excellent. You know, on the, um, I think, I think it was because I attended that meeting with CISMIA, one of the things that they asked also was to perhaps consider doing some sort, some sort of educational programs for the community. Uh, Joe, you remember that? Might be something that we may want to do here as well with, we can educate the public to help better understand these, uh, invasive species. I feel like we're being attacked by, by, uh, people from outer space. But, uh, but I think this is something important for all of us to learn. It would be great if the community would learn more. It's so educational. What do you, what do you think, Jeff?
I'm involved with CISMIA. I was there when they started coming out here and did our, uh, control burn out back for invasives. So, um, I'm also on village parks and I got CISMIA involved in the village. Right now, we're attempting to address the problems at Gan Shaw Park on Saginaw Street. We have to file, we have to get some permits, we have to get some, um, stuff, other stuff lined up. And, um, our contact person at CISMIA, I invited him to come out here and use us as an example of what we have here nature-wise and how we're controlling the invasives and stuff. So people can see, we got the before and after pictures of this out front and out back. And it's, uh, it's, uh, if you get a grant and apply it right, all the work they've done out here, I would say ballpark twenty thousand dollars, didn't cost us a dime. It's all taxpayers' money that is in, in, injected into CISMIA and that's why we hurried up and filed for it because it's money. We can't afford to do it ourselves, even with volunteers. So that's CISMIA. It's a good program and, uh, a lot of down, down county municipalities are filing for it now. So we want some more money up here, up here in Holly. And it's a very good organization. I invited CISMIA to come out here and if they want to do nature walks and show people, the public in the village and the township or anybody, what we're trying to say about here and why it's so important. So it's public education. And that's where, you know, there's, it looks pretty disastrous out here, but it'll get better. So that's what our, our project is with CISMIA.
No, I, I think that's an excellent idea, Joe. Excellent. Uh, I'm looking forward to working with them as well. And, and, and just to be very upfront as well, uh, please note that I'm also a member of the, of the Holly Park Commission as well. So, so everybody knows. Okay. Cindy, you're a little late, but we, uh, we did approve your, your absence, but you arrived. I wrote it down at six eighteen PM, so welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, we're just going around the table to introducing everybody. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Absolutely.
And before you, you start, why don't you move the mic over towards you?
Here.
And then press the button and...
Yeah, she's got the...
Oh, it's on already? Excellent, that's right. The ones I see that red light on, it's, uh, it's on. Again, we're going to get you, I guess I got to get used to this.
Can hear me maybe? I don't know. My name is Cindy Earl. I love Ann Park. I am newly appointed, excited to be here, looking forward to contributing and making the parks board however we can. I am a physical therapy, I work in home care in North Oakland County. And have background in insurance, health insurance, um, for about fifteen years coming. A little bit about myself.
Cindy, we talked a little bit about, about an Easter egg hunt, just to give you a heads up a little bit. I don't want to go backwards, but, um, we're thinking about, uh, maybe bringing it back. It's been a few years since we've done it. Although Jeff brought up a good point, maybe we may be doing it a little bit too late. We may want to look at it for next year and maybe collaborate with other entities that are out there to do this. Do you, what are your thoughts? Any pluses or minuses on the Easter egg hunt or should we? We'll, we'll get some more information from Mary. She's going to contact us and let us know, but just your thoughts. Are you, is it, um, in the past, was it dropped or was it hidden inside?
Spread out. It wasn't really even hidden at all.
Just laid around.
Um, we, we had it and, and I think maybe they changed locations as well. We used to have it at the beach and we had three separate locations depending on age. And then we would have the children go in, choose seven eggs and then go back out and then come back in and take as many as they wanted. With, I believe that they did do it here, um, but they had it inside the ball fields and that and same thing. You know, separated by ages. But, um, you know, we'll...
I mean, that, seems like that could come together, you know? I'm all for it, at least giving it a try for this year, but we can't...
Yeah.
What is the, what do we feel like the biggest?
The biggest drawback is time.
Time getting them together.
Because it takes a long time. And this year, we're going to have an extra step. We decided to, um, soak them in, uh, bleach water and let them dry because of the fact that they were in the sheds for quite a long time without being used.
How many are we thinking?
Well, at times we've had six thousand eggs.
We may not do that many.
So, you know, it, it's very time-consuming that way. I think we could do it if we really rush it, but, um, I think Jeff's point of how many other organizations in town or around us are already doing it, uh, or in activity, um, it might be worth checking into that before we even begin.
And then promotion too. We have less time. How does the, the league, I mean, is there, would there be any collaboration there or could there be? That's a good point. We'd have to look at that. She's going to look and see what's, what's out there, uh, before we do it. So I, I think all of us did agree that that would be a great idea, but only if maybe Mary looks that a little bit further and then, uh, then we'll move, maybe next year we can do it. Joe, you want some?
I think it shed a little light on the Easter egg hunt because I've probably been doing it for ten or fifteen years here. And, uh, six thousand eggs, you got a lot to stuff, you got to put a lot of toys. We used to go around to the businesses and get like free pizza, free sundaes, put them in there. Uh, we put out six thousand eggs and I would say probably five to a thousand people would show up total. And we didn't say you had to be from Holly. They come from Grand Blank, they come from Clarkston. There is other competition around, but it's big time. And you talk about drops, those were marshmallow drops. They had numbered marshmallows. We talked about doing that at one time. Big expense to run a helicopter for two and a half hours. And we never charged for our Easter egg hunt. It was free, free. It was supported by the local community and it took about two months to culminate this thing by stuffing eggs. And we used the Girl Scouts, we used volunteers, anybody to stuff eggs. It takes about two months to get it all ready and get it advertised. But we had, you always had the weekend before, uh, Easter. So it didn't, we, a lot of other ones are on Easter weekend, ours wasn't. But, uh, we did a lot and we did them at the beach, we've done them here. And it was well-attended and, uh, no charge to the public. You give something back to the people for paying taxes.
So in those terms, it feels like this year may not be as attainable, given, you know, what you already have experienced, the timeframe of...
And the biggest thing is unfortunately, we bought some cheap eggs. And so you put them in a garbage bag or you go to set them down, they fall apart and you put them back together. So we have to sort all the cheap eggs, can them. Then we have to wash all the other eggs because they were stored in non-mouse-proof storage.
I think we should just get rid of them.
So we got to wash them, then we got to find out how many tops and how many bottoms we got that match of the good eggs and figure out if we had to buy more because you have to have between four and six thousand eggs. That's a lot of eggs. And the prizes. And, uh, our other director, she's, her name was Tony. You get a piece of paper and yours said, "You got a golden egg, see Tony." That way she'd give you like a free token for a pizza or a sundae and stuff like that.
Plus something special, like come and see Tony, you know? That seems like it'd be special, you know?
It was broken by different age, uh, age groups. And then one stipulation for being a commissioner was you had to be there for that event or find a replacement. Because otherwise, these things don't happen. So we supervised these kids. And the worst ones to supervise were the parents with little toddlers because they wanted to help their kids. So you had to tell parents, "Back off, back off, let the kids enjoy it."
Yeah.
So the first whistle was seven eggs. Everybody got back, faster you got back. Second whistle, all you want. And then what they did was they sorted their eggs, put the used egg, eggs in garbage bags so we could reuse them. We recycle our eggs because they're costly. So that's, you know, there was, there was quite a bit of money involved, even though. Still, it was free to the public, free.
Okay, so, uh, I, I think you got an answer.
Sounds rather daunting, doesn't it?
Yeah. Well, you, why don't you go ahead and look into this?
I will. I will.
Mary's still got to find information about how far, because you have to order all this stuff too and find out next year, we have enough eggs, even enough prizes.
Yeah. We get started new, Jane, Mary.
We have to get a lot of volunteers because after about two and a half hours of sticking, snapping eggs together, your hands are like this. It's tough.
Yeah. Yeah.
And every time we told our staff that we use, "It's egg stuffing time," they, oh! They sit here for, for days putting eggs in.
Yeah, it sounds like we may. Thanks, Jeff. No, uh, I, I think you're right. I'm glad, I'm glad you brought up some, some serious concerns. So if we're going to do something, let's do it right and let's make sure we get it.
Exactly. And time is of the essence.
Yeah.
That's what makes it right. You have to have the eggs all done. We used to have the eggs done by February first.
Okay.
It's better to be ahead of the train than behind the train. That's what makes successful things.
Okay. All right.
That's my two cents with the egg hunt.
No, I think it's excellent information. It's good for us to know. Okay, very good. But Mary, go ahead and, and, uh, you know, look into it and then...
I will.
You know, but I think, I think based on what we've heard now, we may have to hold off as much as we would want to get it done. But we'll be ready next year. Get ready for the egg hunt.
Absolutely.
And maybe we can do a little bit better than just a pizza. So we'll see. Okay. Are there, uh, you know, at this time, Cindy, you can also give a report if you'd like. Is there anything you'd like to report?
Nope, I'm not at this time.
Okay, very good. And also on the agenda, just so you know, you can follow along, we did move one item. So, we moved, uh, item number seven-one to be discussed after number eight-one, okay?
Okay.
Because first we're going to do the election of officers and that would be the Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary. Okay? So, uh, having no, no other, uh, items, uh, let's go ahead and move on to item number six and that is public comment. I'm going to read this so that everybody understands what public comment is all about. This is related to the agenda items here on, on this agenda only. Members of the public can address to the board, once recognized by the chairperson, for items listed on the agenda only. Comments are limited to four minutes. The board may extend time up to an additional four minutes by majority vote. So prior to addressing the board, members of the public must state their name and address for the record. Do we have any members from the public that wish to address this agenda this evening?
Congratulations, everybody. It is a present here. I wish you all well for sure.
Thank you. Okay. Can we, I, I love your comment, sir. Do you mind if we record it?
Oh, sure, sir.
And just, uh, can you just come up and, and just state your name and quickly?
Yeah, I'm, uh, Jim Fuller. I live here in, in the village. Uh, and once again, just congratulations, uh, to all you new board members. I, I wish you well for sure.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you so much. We're going to need your help, so be ready for that Easter egg.
Well, I am a high school teacher, so I might be able to recruit a few, uh...
Hey, there we go.
You know, detention students. Give them a little bit of, uh, help service.
Bring them on.
I like that idea. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, so moving right along, no other objections. Let's move on to item number eight-one, new business, the election of officers. So, uh, we have three, uh, positions that are up. We have Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary. Now, the Chair obviously is the, is the individual. Now this, this position, just so you know, the Chair, they don't have any more authority or any more power than anyone sitting on this table. Their only, their sole purpose is to make sure that the meeting is administered correctly, that's all. And, uh, and then the... And, and then the, the vice chair will be that individual who will come, say for example, if the chair could make it, then the vice chair would, would sit in place. Now, Mary, I see your face. Is there anything else that we have to do?
I just would like to point out, when Joe was chairperson, he also helped with making the agenda.
Oh, three items of the chair, as per the state statute. Run the meeting, represent the board on the outside, like the newspaper or anything else, or if anybody has a question legislatively, they contact the chair. Administratively, they contact our administrator. And the other thing for the chair is to work with the administrator to set the agenda. Three things. You don't get two votes, you don't get a special parking spot, nothing any day above.
Okay, thank you. And the, and the vice chair, should the chair not be able to do it, then the chair, vice chair steps in. And then, and then finally, the secretary. Now, usually, the secretary is responsible for taking minutes of the meeting and working with, with the manager on, on doing that as well. And that's, that's a very important thing to do because they must be timely and under, under state law. They have to be done in a certain amount of time so that we can post them and place them out for the public to review. So that's something we could do. I know that I've quickly spoken with, with the manager, with Mary, and I don't know how y'all feel about this. Maybe having her do our minutes, now that it's recorded, she can obviously go back and look at it. But if you think, if anybody here is interested in doing the minutes, that would be great. Both, I can help, you know, with the person that wants to do that, I can show how, how they're being compiled, and then Mary can work with them as well. But either way, I kind of prefer that, that the manager does this and work together with the, with the secretary as well to, to get them done. What do y'all, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I, I think it makes sense.
We're not eliminating the position.
No.
It's just keep the position, but work with.
Work with Mary until, yeah.
Keep the minutes.
Right, she'll be responsible. I know, we're, we're, it's still new. There's so many things that we got, we have to get together, so like I said at the beginning, you know, we're gonna make some mistakes. And, but we're, we're learning, and we are working board as well. So again, for now, whoever gets to be the secretary, you'll be working with Mary to get those minutes done. But, but it'll be, it'll be okay. It'll be fine. So don't be too scared to, to be the secretary. Okay, so having said, are there any questions on that before we move on real quick? No? Okay, so are there any motions for chair? Any nominations, I should say.
I'd like.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Jane DeSessa for chair.
You have to accept it too, by the way. I know. I, I do accept that nomination. Thank you, sir.
I second.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Are there any other individuals that wish to be considered for chair? You can nominate yourself too, by the way, so you know. All right, hearing none. Let's just go one by one, okay? So motion has been made. Again, I'm, I'm very technical, very, very, very formal, so excuse me. Having Mr. Wright make a motion to appoint Jane Vice DeSessa as chair of the Holly Township Parks. And it's been seconded by Mr. James, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Jeffrey Carl.
It was actually Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jane, Joe made the motion, I apologize. And you did the second?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that correction. I'm sorry, Joe. And thank you for that nomination. Is there, okay, having made that motion and it's been seconded, can I have a quick roll call, please?
Joe Hutchins.
Yes.
Jane Vice DeSessa, or do you have to abstain?
Yes, I already made a mistake.
And for James Wright.
Yes.
And Jeff.
Yes.
And for Cindy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate your support. I'm gonna need your help, okay? So Joe, especially from all of you, and Jeff, you've been here the longest, so I'm, I'm gonna need your help, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, so now for vice chair.
Do we move to vote for it, or is it?
You can nominate. We're gonna nominate people to be vice chair.
I see.
Okay, and then we vote, like we did right now.
I understand.
So are, is there, is anyone wishing to nominate someone or themselves to be vice chair? Come on.
I'll nominate myself for vice chair.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Are there any other individuals that wish to be considered? Okay, hearing none, let's start a quick roll call.
And Joe Hutchins.
Yes.
Jane Vice DeSessa.
Yes.
James Wright.
Yes.
Jeffrey Carl.
Yes.
And Cindy Earl.
Yes.
Thank you.
You asked for it. Okay, it'll be fine.
I'm sure it'll be fun.
I will, it'll be fun.
It's a learning experience.
Thank you, thank you, James. And is it okay if I call everybody by your first names instead of going more formally as I'm used to? Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now moving on to the position of secretary. Is there a motion, or nomination, I should say, for the position of secretary?
You want me to make a motion? Say what you're asking.
Well, I, I mean, I.
You do it, Cindy.
I will nominate myself.
Okay.
Unless somebody else is more interested.
Okay. Okay, so Cynthia Earl has been nominated for secretary. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion was made by, by Cindy and seconded by James. Hearing no other nominations, roll call, please.
Joe Hutchins.
Yes.
Jane Vice DeSessa.
Yes.
James Wright.
Yes.
Jeffrey Carl.
Yes.
And Cindy Earl.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for offering. Appreciate that.
Thank you. We'll work with you. It'll be fine. Okay, excellent. Okay, so now that we have the officers in place, we're going to go back to item number seven one, which is old business. And this is to consider activity at Sorson Park by Northwest Oakland Beekeepers Association, putting up fencing and bringing honeybees and, and beehives this season. So let's begin the discussion. I'm gonna just turn this over now, just so y'all know, the reason it's under old business is it has been already addressed by, by the previous board, I understand. It was addressed sometime in December.
It was, however, when I spoke to you this afternoon, it was not actually correct. We had, Donna and I remembered it as being actually approved, the proposal approved in December, and that is not correct. What the board in December asked Donna and the beekeepers to come back and provide a proposal with more information in it. And so at that point, they did approve the proposal that Northwest Oakland Beekeepers brought. However, that board meeting was not valid due to the fact that the issues that had transpired after that. At the time that they made the decision, it was understood that they were all still on the board. So I will pass out the minutes from that meeting. I know I have given the minutes previously in a packet to the commissioners. But just so that you know, if you wanna read over, under the section about the bees, you can at least read the part where it was approved at that time. And in the information that I had emailed, I believe recently to you, I had included that proposal to you, but when I sent that, I was doing it more as just information based on the fact that you were new commissioners and just wanted to bring everybody up to speed as to what was happening. And I did not actually intended to be, this is what we're voting on tonight. I did not intend that. So if you want to just read that over, and if anybody would like, I can get the proposal and actually have you read that as well.
Okay, so let's, let's do it. Thank you for the information. I hope everybody's had a chance to, to at least look at this before, before you got here. I know that we were given this information when we first walked in, so thank you, Mary. But now that we're a, a new board, with all respect to you all, I know that it was approved by, or at least accepted by the former board. I'm assuming, again, I don't know until we take a, a good vote, that it won't proceed further. I know some of you've had a chance to, to read the, the proposal. I know I, I have some questions, but, but if it's okay with everyone, can I just ask, because they're here today, Donna, maybe just give us a quick report and tell us exactly what you're hoping to do so that the public can, can see as well, and then we can move forward. You wanna come up? We need to get you a mic. I know, I'm sorry. We just have to be very, very transparent.
Well, I would like to have beehives here for educational purposes. I do, we do have a bee club here already. We meet once a month, second Sunday of every month. I would like to have kids programs. And mostly, a lot is hands-on education, because people do not know about honeybees. And I think it will be great for the park, for the pollination, the pollinators.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Do you, do you have anybody else here that you would like to introduce that can give us a little bit more information?
I will. This is, I'm the president of the club, and James, Jim, he is the vice president. And Jesse, he is the director. A very large director.
Okay, very good. Would any of you gentlemen would like to step up and tell us a little bit more?
Sure. Jim Fuller, I, I live here in Holly. I teach high school, Sword Creek High School. And part of the program that we'd like to see happen here, like Donna had said, mentioned beforehand, is to have this, you know, an educational program here. And as a matter of fact, I have my students, I teach construction trades, home improvement, and law of all things at my high school. And we have, in my construction trades, we're building things for this currently as a community service project. I do have pictures, if you'd be interested to see those things, of the progress being, taking care of some.
Absolute.
Pretty slick things. And we also think, having lived here for twenty-eight years, this would be a great utilization of this park. This is one of the most underutilized pearls we have here in Holly, in my opinion. This is just a, just a pearl just waiting to happen. And I think this would be something that would really draw a lot of people. I know myself, being a high school teacher, and my students know I'm a beekeeper. I have them all the time. They're, I mean, we've got kids from Sword Creek that wanna come down here and check this thing out, you know? Word of mouth is a great thing, right? So there's that. Like I said, I've got just a couple of pictures of the hives.
And just for the public, Jim and Donna actually have been here and presented at two separate occasions previously. And so for the new board members, if at some point you would like to have more of a upfront presentation, Donna does have a slideshow and that that she could show.
Yeah, we could, now that we have access to, to the internet, we might be able to show it to the public later on, so.
True.
Yeah, I, well, I just, just some inaction pictures of some of the hives, and there's some of my guys that are, and I, I'll come around.
That's one time.
Yeah, this.
Just horizontalize.
Got some of my girls that are in the class. Not only are they good at building things, they're pretty good at art, too. So they're doing this up pretty well. And they're working on the art. We've got two of these, the other one's still in this, you know, process. But here's the, this is the second one that we're doing. This one, this is a finished one. And now, like I said, I've got a couple of throws.
I did.
They're. You've got stuff that they're painting on there, so it's gonna be a, a, a nice, you know, I guess, pleasing visual, you know, and for little kids and old kids and. How many students are here around us came?
Absolutely.
Really like it as well. So that's kind of what we've got, in the words and in the plan here. We're just hoping that we can move forward with this. It's, again, I, I think it's just a great opportunity for, for Holly and to draw people from other areas, too. Like I said, I mean, this could help downtown. I know I got a lot of people thinking about coming to eat pizza, the Red Devils, speaking of pizza, from Sword Creek. So, but do you have any other questions for me on this stuff? Are there concerns that I might be able to address with this? I know people here are bees, and they're like, oh, man, you know, I mean, it's a good thing I wore my head over and over today, because I'm nervous, right? So.
Well, just for the public, the plan with this project was that not only were they going to bring multiple types of hives for the education part, showing the different types, but they were also going to bring fencing, or the, actually, we may provide fencing from our beach area. And so if people were to come and observe the hives, they will not be able to walk right up to the hive. There's going to be fencing around it, just for the safety of the bees and for the people. So we, we do have that already in place, or working on that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would not be a concern, it'd be something where, you know, people couldn't get to them unless they were allowed to be in.
Well, and the other thing that Donna has stressed to us is the fact that honeybees are not aggressive bees.
No.
That more likely, when you are out and you get stung, it's by wasps or yellow jackets or things like that. So, you know.
Yeah, they're pretty, pretty docile. If anybody's interested, put a suit on, you can take you out. Get you in a bee hive, you know?
I don't know about that.
Well, the, the other thing is, is that Northwest Oakland Bee Association, they meet here the second Sunday of every month. And it's open to the public, so if anybody would like to come.
Twenty-one, so.
Yeah. Are there any questions from the board?
I, I would like to mention that I have, the, the Bee Association's proposal was included with the supporting documentation for the agenda, and that was put onto the website.
Okay.
Or onto the Facebook page.
Oh, thanks.
So the public is able to look at that.
Terrific.
Jim, pending approval, how soon, how quickly could this be up in?
Well, like anything with agricultural weather, and Donna, Donna here has a whole lot more experience in beekeeping than I do, since I'm only twenty-two.
Yeah, I have.
Twenty-two.
I, I would say, I would like to get them here no later than first part of April.
Okay.
But it depends on if everything is ready, you know?
Right. So what that does, it falls into the educational aspect. Kids would still be in school, which is encouraging. It would be up and running and.
Right, but all your kids that come out here, you know, in the summer and.
Yeah, but I'm thinking more of the, a school, I mean, a lot of kids in June.
Yeah, drill trip.
You know, field trips in June.
Yeah, but they're gonna be here, you know, so the next school year, they could come out also.
We're anxious.
That's another thing I hope to start doing when, uh, next school semester or whatever, is in schools and educate, take my little observation hive, because I have one up here in Brown, I put bees in it. And you're gonna see that and talk to them about that also.
And, and just for the board and the public, Donna is actually very experienced with bees, and I think Jim as well. But Donna is going to be teaching the intermediate bee school at Southeast Michigan Bee Association.
And I have taught before.
And that's really a very.
I have taught beginner there also.
Yeah, so we're very fortunate to have somebody with the experience that Donna has, to be able to come out here and.
And I've done a lot with MSU.
Well, bee, bee clubs across the country, but we're fortunate. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I was, I was at the bee. Yes, I was, I was at the Bee Association meeting on this past Sunday. Learned a lot of information, thank you. And Donna, you and I talked after the meeting, and I had questioned whether or not the parks would have any liability, just in case anyone did get stung. I understand that being in nature, things happen. But if we were to have a specific item that could potentially harm the public, what, did you find out any information?
I did, and Mary, I need you to go copy this.
Sure.
Please. I didn't have time. This came from our insurance company. As a beekeeper under Michigan Bee, because I'm under Michigan Bee, my club is, we are covered, we have liability, you know, show.
Oh, excellent. That's good.
The insurance, she just sent it to me this morning.
Would they just have to include us as an additionally named?
The name's on there.
Oh.
Source of it's on, because that's where we have our meetings, and, yeah, it's on there.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Yeah. That's always a, that's always a concern.
Sure.
I have some questions, but I'd like to turn it over to the board first, so any questions on the side?
So is there a period when you bring them in, like is there a, how much time does that take to, once you bring them, is there a period that you can't use, that you can't do, that, like, that they have to be covered, or is it immediately, they're just here?
No, I just sit them out here, bring in the hive, they're already in the hive-
Yep.
-when I bring them here. And, no, they'll just start working. The earlier the better. As soon as plants start, nectar and pollen, that way they find where they're at. Like right now, all these bees are my house. I have eighty-seven hives on my house. But I have a farm.
My goodness.
So that was probably my next question. I noticed the picture of the fence, are all of the hives going to be in that fenced area and?
Well, it won't be that small, but that's just that, yeah, yes. Oh, yeah, they will all be in there, just to protect from small children going up to it. Yeah.
That's your vision.
And if you guys want to know anything, you can call the first room, too.
Any other questions before I ask questions? Joe? Jeff? So I like this idea. I think this is, this is good, especially as everyone here is, has mentioned, we like the educational part. You know, it's addressing nature and understanding its relationship to our everyday lives. I think that's, that's so key. Because as a former public administrator, I'm, I'm very concerned about an agreement. And I'm so glad that you brought this insurance, so obviously that alleviates my, my brain in terms of insurance for liability, so thank you, Donna, for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It helps. The, I guess for me, and I hope this isn't a downer, because I hope you guys are here forever and ever and ever, but things happen, and so if we could work together in coming up with an agreement as to how this is, this program will be administered and managed and things of that nature, having a termination clause and having a date. I did read your proposal, but it's, it's missing on a few, on a few things. And again, this is just, it was just to begin. You know, I'd like to see some dates on, on things. I'd like to see this sort of thing indemnification and insurance, and who's responsible for who. And Jim, I hope that you're, you know, you're going to be out here teaching some classes as well and, you know, talking to the students, the importance of beekeeping and things of that nature. So if, the purpose of this item, because it's just to consider, we don't actually have to vote yet on this matter, but it seems like you've got an okay, I think, from everybody listening, to everybody's comments. Joe, how do you feel about the bees here? Are you okay with that? Okay? Perfect.
Yeah, nature.
So you have us, like a straw poll vote, that yes, you have our support. All I ask is that we, we come up with an agreement of some sort that, that addresses issues such as this in writing?
So, let me, I understand, I think what you're saying is just some sort of a agreement between us, the Morphos Open County Beekeepers Association, and the Holly Township, is that what we're putting it?
Well, parks.
Or the Holly Township Parks, I mean?
Yes.
And then, so within that document, we'll, we'll have this, of course, and then any kind of, sort of, like, we agree to make sure everything's kept up to snuff and, you know, it's not going to look like a dump or something like that, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, it'll be constantly, you know, taken care of. That's one thing about beekeeping, you know, clean, you know?
Exactly, that's what I'm looking for.
Also, I want to make sure that, also in the agreement, that you have what you are expecting us to do, to provide. So not only you, but us as the parks.
That's to protect you as well, to make sure we give you the space.
Also, anything that belongs to you folks, we like labeled and documented, like those are your hives, your stands, whatever else that belongs to you.
Yeah, all the, all the stuff, which isn't on hives yet, but it's going to be, when this finishes, N O B A, North Oakland Beekeepers Association, all of our equipment stuff will be, you know?
That way, there's no question.
Yeah.
What's yours is yours, and what's ours is ours.
Yeah. And the stuff we use is pretty specific to beekeeping, you know, so.
Yeah, we should have a list, a listing of what items are yours, so that we know upfront.
Whatever we bring in, whatever, yeah.
Right.
That'll probably be a changing thing, as time progresses, we might have to bring out extra boxes, because those bee colonies grow overseas.
See, that's-
So we might have to add, you know?
I think in the proposal currently, it has seven to ten hives.
Holly brings the hives in, they will be broke down to like, maybe one box. Well, those are going to grow over the summer, because they're going to bring in honey. They will be brought in in one brood box. The second, then they have to have two brood boxes. And on top of that, the honey supers go on, not those long ones, they all stay the long ones.
So these are, these are things that we need to know, because I don't think we know that. And plus, again, with all due respect, you have to get approval from, from the board here, there has to be, at least in my opinion, a number as to how many you can have out there, I mean-
Seven or ten are all there.
There are seven to ten.
Seven to ten, okay.
And if they grow, because sometimes you have to split them, we'll take them home or sell them.
Wow.
That's what I have on that.
Learning a lot about bees.
Big class.
The pictures on there is of, not all of my hives, are the hives that are in my yard, that's my house, look how close those bees are to my house.
I understand.
I have grandchildren, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Here's one example of this particular type. There's, this is just one I assembled, I haven't painted yet.
Oh, nice.
So that, they just go up, so.
Yeah. Nice. But that is what Donna had explained previously, is that the bees, as they accumulate new bees and things like that, they get to the point where they have to split the hive-
Yeah.
-so that they can stay healthy or not swarm. And so that was why, she also wanted possible space in one of the sheds to be able to store a couple of boxes in case of swarms.
Okay. All right.
And someone can call, or if I'm here, I can catch them.
Okay. All right.
I do that a lot, I've been forty feet in the air on a cherry picker.
Oh, my God.
I have, forty feet in the air.
Some of the, the two probably should explain that. When, when bees swarm, that's actually what they're calling us. Once they cluster on there, I mean, Jesse, the very first time he ever experienced bees was last year, two years ago, I might be handing that to set of hands over here, just cut them out, I mean, you could literally take them with your hand like that. They don't have anything to protect, I mean, they're so docile. People don't believe it, but it's true. It's unbelievable.
That's true. They're only protecting their claim.
Yeah.
That's not in their minds, Steve, at all.
Okay. Well, this is going to be really interesting, very educational.
It is very educational.
Super educational. So my, as I said before, we, I think you have a straw feeling here, a straw vote-
Sure.
-that, yes, it's, it's very positive, but we ask that you bring us back and work with, with Mary and myself to come up with a good agreement, and then we can, we can move forward. Actually, your proposal more or less could be an agreement.
Okay.
We can make it so, and then-
Just add more details.
We can add a few more details, like I said, some dates.
And with the document, with the insurance as well.
And the insurance, definitely, things like that, so.
An out clause, I mean, if you don't like us and you want to pull out.
Oh, yeah.
Tell me about being there.
Actually, Jane had mentioned that a couple of days ago, too.
Yeah, to have a-
Termination policy for both, so.
I think I asked my wife for one of those, it didn't work out, and then forty-six years later, it goes.
Thank you, thank you both for coming.
One little insight, I feel fortunate about this, because we owned more or less a garden spot and fruit place. We grew it on our property. We had bees and all the neighbors had bees, because everybody benefited by bees, so.
Yeah.
I remember my dad with his smoke box, he had an old straw hat from the turn of the century with his net on him, we go out and smoke the bees as a kid, and the bees, they were bothering, they lay down, you look at you and leave.
Yeah.
Can you tell for the public the importance of bee hives and why we need to continue this?
Well, yeah, you know, I probably should defer to my president here, I think I've hogged a lot of time, so, go ahead, Donna.
Donna?
They're pollinators. They pollinate a lot of our food, our trees, our plants. We didn't have honeybees, you wouldn't have the trees and the plants. And I did have, wasn't that in my, probably my, yeah, it was all in there that I told about the plants and the trees and the food, I showed the food you wouldn't have if you didn't have pollination.
You wouldn't have pollination, yeah.
Yeah, that was my PowerPoint.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, I'm familiar with flowers and things like that, but food, you're absolutely right. How could I forget that? More important than anything.
Yeah, the food, you wouldn't have the food.
One comment on the pollinators, I was watching the nightly news the other night, twenty-five percent of the monarch butterfly's are gone.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're trying to fight you around why there are pollinators. The different birds around are pollinators, insects are different pollinators. So there's, we got some problems somewhere.
Well, sixty percent of the honeybees that were going in to pollinate the almonds, they were dead by the time they got there. So the labs are all hustling to find out why.
Trying to figure it out.
Yes.
There, I mean, there's a, I had his grandson in class, he's a commercial beekeeper, I mean, he's got tens of thousands of bee hives in Swords Creek, but he ships them to Texas, to California-
Yes.
-for pollinating the giant almond groves and citrus groves and stuff like that.
So pollen, so almonds are going to be more expensive, they're going to be smaller, because they didn't get the pollination they needed. And then it's going to go on to the other crops and-
And a lot of the crop lands around here are hay crops, which bees are a great pollinator of clothing.
Oh, yeah. But we have, we have a business of hay.
Yeah.
My husband does. That's his side job. Part of the bees, his, his side job takes care of me spending all the money.
But you got to remind him, without my bees, you wouldn't have the crop.
That's right. That's right. Good point.
Yeah.
Good point. I think it's, I think we're all agreeing, this is, this is a good thing to do, and we'd like to do it, but we want to do it right. And we want to make sure that we have an agreement that protects both.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, both sides.
We just want to see a good thing here, you know, something that's really going to, you know, I mean, my wife and I are originally from here, but, you know, we've lived here in Holly for twenty-eight years, and, you know, you struck a memory chord, because we used to take our daughter to the egg hunt down at the beach, and some of these great, of course, COVID probably killed a lot of stuff, right?
Yeah.
I mean, like an education, but, you know, we've got such potential here, you know?
It is a beautiful place, so to do something like this.
And our club, they really like this area.
They do.
They come from Clarkston, some of the members come from Clarkston.
I come from Sharon Street, I mean-
They come from, they come from White Lake, Clarkston, it's just not in this, you know-
Not just this area, yeah.
But instead of, one of the instructors-
Southeast Michigan Beekeepers Association.
Their, their class, their beekeeping class, I just talked to a person, one of their instructors, and she told me that there is people that live in this area that are taking that class. And she said she was going to let them know that, you know, for further education, to come here for the-
And all of our classes are free.
Well, yeah.
We're not, you know, a lot of these are fixed charge, you know? I mean, but, I don't know, we used to sell little rocks and trinkets, we probably put some for sale for people to come through, I don't know, you know?
Well, you said Joe's favorite word, free.
Donna, did you say Kensington Park has hives?
They do.
Okay.
Yes, Kensington does have hives. Bell Isle has hives.
Okay.
Seven Ponds has hives, that's a nature center in Delaware.
The other thing is, is that some of the places that have hives and have had them for years, they don't even have fencing around them.
Correct.
They, they're just open, in fact, Kensington's is right outside their restaurant, isn't it?
Yes, yes, it's right outside the restaurant.
So they're, they're more exposed than they would be here to people.
And that hive in Ann Arbor, they, their hives is out there, they're not, nothing around, there's nothing around them.
And so why are we considering the fence?
We were-
Because it's new here.
There could be raccoons or something that get, destroy them.
Plus, it's a good piece of money for group clubs.
Well, I just would like to start like that, if you really want to know, that's, that's what I, the raccoons wouldn't bother, I have-
I don't think the raccoons would bother them.
I have lots of raccoons, skulks.
I think the animal kingdom knows not to bother bees.
They don't know.
It's us that you have to worry about. That's, I think that's why I asked at one of the-
And this is isolated back here.
Yeah.
That's another reason I thought about having the world.
I don't know, I thought maybe the fence might be up on top, you know, as well.
Well, we had talked about doing surveillance cameras as well, just for the sake of knowing what was happening.
This is a big investment on your part.
Correct.
So we want to make sure that it's protected. That's a good question. Okay, all right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other?
Any other questions? No, let's just work on this contract and let's bring it back really quickly, okay? So we can get this, or proposal, or contract slash proposal.
Sure.
All right, let's get it done quick.
Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, we're not going to vote on this until we get this agreement together, okay? So as soon as we can, but I know you want, you want to be moving on some things. Okay, that was going to be my next point. So if, if it's okay with you all, can we give her permission to at least begin some of the placement of the hives? Does everybody have a problem with that, or should we? We do have some insurance here, so we, that's one thing that's kind of helps a little, but, Joe?
One project I am going, it looks pretty woody out here, because they chop so bad. Some are big pieces, a lot of this is food for the, for the ground and everything else. We have a tractor up in the barn, loader tractor, with a back blade and a bucket on it. I got to change the oil and get it running, but I'm going to borrow a seven-foot back rake for it, landscape rake, and kind of rake up some of this big debris and get it all the way, mainly out here where you see this clear spot is where their bees are going to be. So I want to get that place out there cleared for them enough, probably next week, get it raked up and get these them so they can start setting up what they want to set up. I want to be ahead of the curve, not behind the curve. I want to be ahead of the curve, not behind the curve. And the tractor's the best way to do it. Otherwise you're going to be out there with a bunch of hand rakes, really killing yourself. So, that's my project for next week is to get the John here running, get my buddy to drop off his rake and get some work done. I can do more in an hour than everybody can do in five hours. That's the way to get it. And we got some more raking to do around here, make it a little bit better. They double chopped this. First they chopped the brush, then they took their machine and chopped it on the ground.
Yeah, I heard you say that.
Yeah, I think it was, I'd like to have that machine a couple of days. There was a lot of stuff.
I saw, I saw that too as well when they were out there, so.
So, that's my project coming up next week is to get the tractor out, start moving stuff around, get out of your way. Because I can always work around you, but we might get you in it. It's time sensitive and weather sensitive to the bees.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
Can I just simply ask that you work very closely with our manager, please, on that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Cindy, I see you have questions. What are your, you have concerns?
Yep.
Okay. Jeff, what do you think? Are you, you okay?
I'm ready to vote.
You're ready? We're not going to vote yet, we're not going to vote, because we have nothing to vote here, but we're just going to give a, again, I see a consensus at least, but we will vote next time on the actual agreement. So for now, you can take some steps, but work with our manager to get it done. I mean, don't put up any fence or anything like that until you get permission. But some of the basic, very basic, is that okay with everybody?
Absolutely.
Do, but of course Joe's got to do the big work.
That's easy. It's funded on a tractor.
Okay. You can see we're a working, things done. Okay, all right, any other questions? If not, we can, we can proceed. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all. You're invited to, right, you're invited to stay or you can, you can leave if you like, okay?
Good luck. Good luck everybody, I wish you.
Thank you, and thank you for making that statement. It means a lot to me, so thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Jesse.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, so moving on to item number two. I gotta do better at this meeting because Joe wants us to get an hour. I wish I could do that that quickly. Next time, next time. So, item number eight, eight-two, which is consider approval on the 2025 contract with Little League and Holly Township Parks. So with that, I do know that James wants to make a statement.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I like, as a member of Holly Little League Board of Directors, I have to refuse myself for voting on anything Holly, Little League related. However, I will participate in the discussion to make sure all the details are addressed.
So, so you have recused, recused yourself from voting?
Yes.
Do we need to make a motion to that?
Yes, we have to accept it, for his reasons.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept Mr. Wright's recusal, if I say that correctly, from this item? Is there a motion, please? Anybody make a motion to recuse Mr. Jim?
Make a motion to recuse.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Cindy and seconded by Jeff. Roll call, please. Mary?
Joe Hutchins?
Yes.
Jane Bystessa?
Yes.
And James Wright, oh, sorry, excused. And Jeffrey Carroll?
Yes.
And Cindy Earl, yes, thank you.
Okay, motion passes, so that means that you may not vote on this. Thank you for, for being upfront about this and being transparent. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So, we now have the 2025 field use agreement. So, can we ask you, or do we have someone from?
We actually had the Holly Little League President here.
Okay, yes. Okay, you want to come up and make a quick presentation, sir? Just tell us who you are and.
My name's Aaron Flations. I'm the President of the Holly Little League.
Aaron and I have met a couple of times and discussed this already.
Excellent, excellent.
Last year was our first year here and honestly it went really well. I thought there was no problems on our end. I didn't hear anything from you guys, so I'm assuming that it went well. Seasons go from April through June in our spring season. Fall season is August through October. One of the, did we, were we able to fix that?
I wasn't because I couldn't get into the document to change it. I, I talked to James about it, so we're going to work on that.
Yeah.
But we also have to, now that the election has been held, we have to change the chairperson and another part on here, so we, it'll be easy to fix.
Yeah.
In our conversation, one of the things that Little League was concerned about was that they have made some past improvements to the field that were sizable. And so they had had, I believe, a verbal agreement with Amy at that time to use that to offset some of the costs that they had for mowing. And another concern that Commissioner Hutchins had was that Little League would dispose of their trash, which I know in the past you offered to do.
Yeah.
And Amy at that time had said that we had staff and they were going to do it. So those were the two changes to the past agreement. So those were the only changes that we saw that were necessary. I don't know if there's anybody else who has any comments on that, but other than that, I think this was the working document you and I were working off of.
Yep.
I, I do have some more questions, but I'll, I'll let you all first ask questions. Cindy?
So, I guess my question is, what are the field's conditions now? Do they need to be, is there, do they need to be done to them now?
No, not, not, it needs to be done. Just improvements that we've talked about is adding enclosed dugouts. So, you know, okay, if you catch a fly ball or anything like that. It's just stuff like that, just for safety reasons. Nothing, nothing's urgent, nothing has to be done.
Yeah, as far as the safety of the fields, are they in a good working position as far as the safety of the state?
Yeah, yeah.
And that additional work would be done by the Little League, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we, I was up here every day in the spring, getting ready for the season, so.
What's nice about the fields are, it's a gravel pit.
Yeah.
So it's never gets, I don't care how much it rains, usually the lower field gets a little wetter, but it usually dries up by the time for anybody to play baseball.
Yeah, we, we only had a cough a couple of games this year when we were a car director. It was once a week, it felt like.
Yeah.
It was a lot better here. Like, the fields don't maintain the water.
Yeah.
They dry up very nice.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, so I have, I have a, I have a couple of questions. Forgive me, I'm new, okay? So, insurance wise, do we have?
Yeah, yeah, we have insurance.
Okay.
It's pending approval right now. I think, but that just happens all the time.
Can we have a copy of that insurance policy and make sure that we are additionally insured, just like this one here?
Yeah, it's approved now.
Okay.
I'll just email it to Mary.
Okay. Now, I'm not going to give an amount because that's, you know, that's something that, that's discussed ahead of time too, how much we want to be insured by. But I think something similar to this, which they, they do insure us.
That is actually through Michigan Bee, of which Northwest Oakland is underneath that, so.
I mean. So let's make sure that it's comparable to this. I mean, I've seen many and they're sort of the same.
Ours is through Little League International.
Okay.
So it's.
All right.
I'm almost, I think it's a million dollars. I'm not.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's a million dollar insured. Pray nothing horrific happens, but, but of course we got to take the proper precautions.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm going to say, let's, we need this, okay, from y'all too, for our purposes as well. And the only other thing, well, I have a couple of other things, but I'm, I know you've done this many, how many years have we done this? Is this the first, second year?
This will be the second year.
The second year. I know you said things went well. Manager, are you familiar with any issues that, that we need to address so that they don't occur? Other than the trash issue?
No, that was the only thing that I think we had any issues of last year.
Okay.
Yeah, the fields always look good. You guys dragged them and everything else. You guys did a good job up there. I dragged those fields a lot and lined them too. I know what it takes.
Yeah, we have someone up here Monday to Thursday, every day, dragging them and chopping them.
And we also allow you guys to have that one storage unit too, that you put your lock on in the ball shack too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That should probably show up in the contract though too, for the day. We allow them storage in two places with their locks.
I think the other benefit is, is you guys provide your own umpires and stuff, right?
Yeah.
So, that is a real benefit.
All you guys provide is the fields, take care of everything else.
Yep.
Yes.
And the scheduling, that's the hard part.
Yeah.
Yeah, the scheduling, okay, so.
And when it comes to the locks, like last year, I gave Amy the codes to all of them, so you guys have access to them also.
Yeah, that, that's something that, is it, it's not in here?
The lock, no, the locks situation wasn't.
Okay, so can, if we can please add, add that, and we'd give it to the manager, okay? We don't need that information here.
Yeah.
Just give that to the manager, because she's the one that would be dealing with that issue. So, that, so the insurance, the lock, please make sure you, you come back with this, with this new. I think we may be willing to do this as long as you are willing to agree to come back to, or provide the manager with this information. Dates, I think, would be something that I would be interested. I know you give August to September. Do you have the dates already set up for the?
No, schedules aren't yet, but usually it's, we start practicing the first week of April. And season usually goes through the middle, end of June.
Okay.
And then fall starts first week of August, and it usually goes to the first week of October.
Okay, so what I, because what I'd like to do, and this is just my suggestion, it has to be discussed by the board, now that we're going to, we're looking at a website, it'd be great if we could let people know, if you're interested in, you know, letting people know that, that there's baseball games here that they can come and watch. Wouldn't that be awesome?
And James is actually our IT guy, so he could probably just have it set up.
I'm also the registrar for the Little League, so I handle all the computer stuff.
Excellent, excellent.
And I.
He could probably link it.
Yeah.
And it would be nice to acknowledge and thank, you know. And then the last thing that's here, and it's not here, but if you do make some changes to the, to our grounds, you must first come to us for permission to do that. And it's not here, okay? So I would ask that you please put something in here that that says, that we have to approve it. Unless it's some, I mean, again, it's up to, to this board, if it's something minor, you know.
Yeah.
Obviously, but, but for the most part, if you're going to be doing any kind of major changes, like dugouts, you know, fences, lights, you know, things like that, that has to.
Please, we're not, we're not.
Okay. I agree, right?
We'll be looking at grants.
Okay, okay.
Build it and they will come, right?
Build it and they will come, yes.
Question. Your second bullet, bullet point indicates that if you can't mow the out, or the outfields, then you will help cover the cost. I don't think we've ever derived a cost if we mow the fields, so I think we need to fill that in.
Okay. Well, how about if we say, if we do have to, you need to come back to us and then we can figure out the cost? Or you can give us an estimate if you know how much it would cost to mow.
Have we ever done that? I don't know.
I don't, I don't know. Well, it's only been one year.
Well, part of it is, is because last year you guys did fences, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was kind of the offset.
Yeah, not last year, they were, they made up for that, yeah. We've never figured out, I only charged for our zero turn in our personnel. We had a contractor in here a couple of years ago who used to mow all this. We're in the wrong business. If things didn't get mowed up, we have trained personnel on our equipment and I'm the backup mow jockey. So if nobody shows up, you might see me out there bouncing around. It takes about an hour to do each ball field with a big zero turn, a big commercial. Yeah, we got a beast out there.
Okay, so let's see if we can work together with you, me and Mary. We can come up and make sure that this agreement includes those items on there. And one thing that we could do, if we needed a number, if you want to put a number in there, we could call maybe some of the surrounding communities that do this, and they can kind of give us an estimate. But I think for, for our sake, maybe if you need that, you need to come to us first and then we can say, can we do this? Can we afford to do this? Again, I don't know what kind of price we're looking at. Jeff?
I, I think the incident is going to be pretty rare, number one, but I think it's up to us to put some facts and figures together so that can be provided in here.
I agree.
Not, not wait till the incident happens. As Joe said, is it forty dollars, fifty dollars, or? You know, I think we can, we can put together the, the hour capacity it's going to take and, and usage and fuel and come up with a reasonable dollar amount.
Depreciation of equipment and labor.
Sure.
Just like a, we have to be a contractor.
Yeah, that's on us. I think we need to provide him with that.
The way you know a cost if something happens, what it's going to cost you for us to mow the fields. But I say, I've done those fields quite a few times. It's about an hour, no trimming, just mowing.
Yeah.
That's a big field.
It is, they're really big.
In our mower, the claim to fame on our mower is six inches of wet grass at ten miles an hour. So we got a commercial, you know, we could really run with it. This ain't your local lawn jockey. I'm impressed, but we buy top of the line mower.
Okay, so let's work on, on this.
Absolutely.
Okay, so there's a couple of changes to this that need to be done. How quickly do you need this? Can you wait till the next time we meet, or?
They will already be playing by then.
Or they'll be playing, okay.
So we can, we can add a motion with, with minor detail changes, we accept this with minor detail changes, and if you want to, the motion can list what we have to have, and then we could pass it. That's just my take on it.
Okay, all right.
Under the stipulation of the minor details, we'll pass this.
So the, the motion should read something like, motion to approve XYZ contract with the following items to be addressed or included in this agreement, and it'll be worked out by, together with the, with the manager, okay? All right, so.
I just want to say a couple of things. One, for clarity, Madam Chair, you said that us as commissioners wouldn't need to know how to get into their storage unit. I just want to be transparent. I would know the combinations being on the board. Secondly, I just had a couple of questions, if, if that would be okay to clarify some details.
Absolutely.
Are there only Holly kids going to be using these fields?
No, no, we will have kids from surrounding towns. We play through Quad Town, which is Fenton, Lee Fenton, Harland, Linden, Bramble End and Watford. So, yeah, just about every, every night, just about, there'll be another town or two here.
And the second question I had was, if we, if the board would not approve this, where else could you play?
Nowhere. There'd be a hundred and fifty kids that wouldn't have anywhere to play.
Uh-oh. Okay, that's pressure.
I think you're leading the witness.
Just, very, you know, just not to go off on a tangent, because I don't want to, like, like Joe said, we wanted to keep this, you know, relatively short. But after losing the Carl Victor fields that we had, they really put a strain on the Little League. And we had probably three, well, probably closer to three hundred kids at that point utilizing the eight fields that we had there. Cutting it down to four is, was extremely difficult.
Sure.
And we, we worked very hard to be able to do that, so.
Yeah, no, I, I know how important sports are. Jeff, you want to say something? Sorry, sir.
No, I think this community needs something like this and we need to keep it going. We need to keep our use active in athletics. It's a good program.
It's all part of recreation. That's what our other responsibility, parks and rec.
Correct.
It's nature and sports and anything else you want to do here.
So.
I, I was on the board of directors for the community center at Richter, and we heard they're going to get rid of the fields. Man, it was devastating to me. I don't have anybody in Little League, you know. I thought, what are you guys going to do?
It was tough. Well, we figured, thanks to you guys.
What is, what is Springfield doing with their fields? That's the closest thing they have fields. What do they do there?
What do, what do they do?
I mean, they play Little League there, is that different?
No, so they, they run out to travel ball, do a lot, so. Yeah, they, during the spring season it's basically booked. Once you get to summer, it's pretty open, but in the spring when we play, it's almost completely booked.
So you guys come down to maybe Hayfield if you're going to be lucky, if we didn't have ball fields here.
Yeah.
Man.
Wow.
Plus we lost the one at Cyclone.
Yep.
Which was our makeup one for, for softball for years. We lost that one.
Wow. Okay.
Thank you guys all, what you've done with Little League.
Thank you guys. You guys saved it, so.
Thank you, I'm so glad. So, I guess the only other question I have would be, let's just make sure that we get some of these changes done as quickly as possible so that you can begin. But again, it depends on how this board is going to vote on this. So I need to hear a motion, so, I mean, I can kind of more or less say it, but hope somebody wrote it down. So the motion would be to approve, approve the, approve the 2025 contract with Little League and Holly Township Parks. And then how do we say this? With the following additions to the contract, which will be worked away through the, through the manager and the chair. Is that okay? Would that be okay with everyone?
Yeah, stipulations.
Okay. I knew I had a question, finally came to me. So, when an issue arises, I don't know if it's on here, is there a contact person? Would it be you or would it be James or?
It could be. And if I don't, you guys have an inside source.
I want to call you. Okay, so that'd be great. No, no, we'll, as Joe has stipulated, there is a separation between administration and legislation. So, management will be the one dealing with that. Okay, so the, the additions to the agreement would include things such as?
Insurance.
Insurance.
Locks.
The locks.
Contact person.
A contact person.
And dates.
Dates, please.
And any changes to the grounds.
Any changes to the ground must be approved. So if you guys have any big plans, which I'm hoping you will, you know, please let us know and maybe there's something we could do to help, maybe at least possibly promote. That's just me speaking, okay? That's just me speaking, okay? We need, we need the board, we need the board to approve.
And the mowing cost.
And the mowing cost, thank you, sir. Yes. Again, this is all new. In the future, we probably won't be needing any of this, any of these items, and you'll know for next year, 'cause I hope you'll be here next year too, and, uh, and we'll get it done. Anything else on the addition side?
Also, I'd like to mention too, that the, that sign that's on the front of the park coming in was a Little League sign, so people know it's the Little League, which is, which is very important.
Very signage. So you're gonna be responsible for maintaining that sign too? Hope you know that. Okay, make sure we put that in there, signs. This, this, is this, uh, when we put up signs, signs is very important, so we wanna make sure that the signs matches what our signs are, so that, you know, you won't, and then there's be some limitations on the sign. We don't want you to put a big gigantic sign, you know?
They already have it up.
Yeah.
It's already up.
So let's take a look at that sign, make sure that it, it, it matches whatever it is that we're doing here, okay? Just for the future. Again, these are things that we don't think about, and the next thing you know, we got lighted sign, or something like that, okay? But I know you'll work with us, I know. We're learning here, and we're, we're going, we're a small group, and we've got a lot to do, so, you know, thank you very much for working with us and, and being patient, and we will, we'll get through to this. And we're so excited about this. I know everybody likes the, the recreation part, and, uh, baseball is a good one, so... Okay, so you all heard the, uh, the additions. I'd be happy to repeat them if I have to, but is there a motion for someone to...
Yes, I would like to make a motion, so moved.
With all those, you got those changes, and they are recorded too?
Yep.
So that's very good. So motion by, uh, Joe Hutchins, is there a support?
My second.
Okay, second, second by Jeffrey, uh...
Carl.
Carl? Any other questions? None? Roll call, please.
Joe Hutchins?
Yes.
Jane Vice-Dissesse.
Yes.
James, oh, can you vote? Jeff Carl?
Yes.
And Cindy Earl, yes. Thank you.
Also, one comment on that, on the roll call, it'll be shown that James was a conflict of interest, so that was a, he wasn't asked to vote conflict of interest. It shows up there in the minutes.
Yes, and we, we did make a motion to refuse.
So that way, it doubles it when somebody says, well, how come he didn't vote? Well, it's already explained twice.
Very good, excellent. Good point, good point, Joe. Okay, so moving right along. Uh, again, sir, you're welcome to stay, or you can, you can leave as well. So thank you and good luck.
Thanks, Erin.
Madam Chairman, could I, could I recommend we move to item five, 'cause we have a guest speaker? The other items, I think, are more internal.
Okay.
Do we need approval of that?
Well, when we make any, that's why I asked at the beginning of the meeting, are there any changes? Then that's when we address it.
He just walked in.
Okay, all right. Oh, you said it's six fifteen. That's right, you did mention that, okay. Is there any, is there, is everyone okay with that? Can we just make a motion to, uh, move this up for discussion first, please? Let's make a motion, all right? Is there, is there someone willing to make that motion to move item number, uh, number, is it number five?
Five.
Number five?
A, a technicality on, on the board?
Yes, sir.
We've already approved the agenda as it was already submitted or changed. So I don't know if we could do this.
We, we're not, it, it, we shouldn't allow that, okay?
Yeah.
And you're right, like, that's why I'm asking for a motion to, to make that happen.
A motion that we move item number five to, uh, number three position.
Is there a support?
My second.
So motion by, uh, Jeffrey Carl is supported by, uh, James Wright. Any other comments? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Joe Hutchins?
No.
Jane Vice-Dissesse.
I'm going to go ahead and say yes with the, with the explanation that you did tell us that this individual was going to be here at certain times, so I under, I understand, and I appreciate his time. But in the future, please, everyone, if you have any changes, let's do it ahead of time, 'cause Joe's absolutely right. We need to stick with what we said, okay? Thank you. So I will vote yes.
Change, right?
Yes.
Jeffrey Carl?
Yes.
Cindy Earl?
Yes. Okay, so it was approved. Motion approved, motion did pass. All right, moving, uh, right along, so we're gonna move this to item number of, number three. It will now be to discuss, uh, needed improvements to the parking lot and drive-in front of the Nature Center at Sorson Park. So, uh, we do have someone that wants to come in and discuss this, or?
Actually, who, who put this on the agenda? I think they need to lead, and then if we have questions, we can ask Mr. Montgomery.
All right, so I know that the manager asked us to, to address this, so let me turn it over to her. Mary?
Thank you. During this past winter, we had a terrible time with the parking lot, and this is not the first time. The parking lot has been an issue back, uh, even as far as twenty years ago when I was on the board. The current problem is, is that the drainage, um, we have a hill coming one direction, we have a hill coming another direction, and whatever type of drainage had been put in, like culverts and things like that, appear to have filled in, um, whether it's sand or whatever. What happens is, is that we just have a bottleneck right in the front of the Nature Center doors. We either had terrible ice throughout the whole season, or we had mud. Mud to where you sink in and your shoes are coated all along the bottom, which, you know, is a problem for not only people, but also our Nature Center and having to maintain it. But, um, it's a liability as well, because we have people who come here and use this building, and, including staff. And I know of, um, two years in a row where staff have literally fallen due to ice. And so we cannot, you know, continue to have this. And that's why I wanted to add it now to the, um, agenda, so that we can have time to work on this this summer, so that next winter, we do not have to deal with this again. And, uh, thank you. That's all I needed to say.
Does this include the road coming off East Holly, or?
I did not include that in here, just because we felt it was more important to do specific to here right now. But I agree with you that I think the entrance right by North Holly, or East Holly, our staff spends a tremendous amount of time filling and smoothing that area, just because it gets potholed by the use of, we only have the one entrance, and so it does get tremendous amount of use of people coming in and out. And, um, you know, maybe even if we were to asphalt from the roadway up to the gate, might alleviate some of that, I don't know. But, uh, I, I felt that our biggest issue was this right here, because of the danger to it.
Yes, Joe?
To address the problem at the entrance, the County Road Commission came to and redid East Holly Road. And asphalt in our April before. Well, when they came back to and redid it, they added another two inches of asphalt. So we can't get to the ditching. So that's what caused the entrance. We used to drain down on, on the asphalt road into the ditches on each side. There's a cove. So that's the problem the road commission has. Out here, years ago, we ditched over here. There's a cove that comes out through here. There's a cove up, up farther by the disc golf. Over the years, sand moves. You can't stop it. And we never maintained the ditches. The ditches are full. So this hill, that hill, and this hill drains right down to here. Over the years, I've taken our big loader tractor and tried to make it go that way. Otherwise, it used to be a lot worse. That big wet pillow used to be right at the door. But our tractor's not heavy enough, and now that we don't have no ditches to go to, there's no place to send the water. So we have to, we have to re-ditch and hit the fall away from the building, and guide it where it used to be. Harvey Sorson dug the ditches with a Kubota backhoe. That's the problem. He saw it years ago. We never maintained it. We had a garden up here, a garden spot. We have right guy. You take the grass away, right down there, there's a cove that comes right out through here. And I put some rocks there, we started filling, so we plugged it all the way, but that ditch is, is buried. And it's, it's actually higher than the grade.
So there is a cove up...
Right over here.
And it, it drains that way, or this way?
It drains this way. This is, this is, uh, north. We got a cove going north to south, right near the building, right out here. It starts over here. And if you go up the road a little bit, there's another cove you can see. It drains, as you're coming down in from the disc golf, it drains. That's been ditched and sends it down into the wetlands, okay? And then there's a cove you'll never find, because it, it drains up by the building, the pole wire, and, uh, it filled in real quick. It used to go and connect all these drains and help drain out that curve in the road. And the other problem we have is the parking area at the top of the hill is hard peeing clay. Every time it rains, all the sand washes down. So everybody dries it back up the hill, and when it rains, uh, comes the sand. We put, uh, crushed asphalt there and other things. We lost the ditching on that. 'Cause we used to go to the ditches. Now it just comes right down the hill and piles up at the bottom of the hill. That's where the other secret cove is, is at the bottom of the hill, yeah. But sand moves. Where it's drier, wet, sand is always on the move. So we had to firm things up. And some of that should be clay gravel wash, or, uh, wash, clay gravel mixed. So we incorporated the sand. The top of the hill up there, I can't dig it with a front end loader. It's that hard. It's paved up on the top. But the rest of it just comes right down the hill. We take it all back up the hill again. And that's been over the last, this was built in ninety-seven. So that's been the problem. After we lost the ditches, that's the problem we're ending up. We never maintained it.
And that was nineteen ninety-seven, or so?
That's when they built this place up in ninety-seven. The ball field's already up there. And the county maintains our chloride. The village used to have a road grader. They used to come up, they had a guy that knew how to run a road grader. Nobody knows how to run a road grader nowhere. And he'd keep that thing up there just beautiful. Then the county would come in once in a while with their road grader for chloride, and they do it. Now we're trying to teach the plow guys at the DPW with a belly mounted truck, which is used to float gravel, that's why they call it a float truck. You can't plow with a float truck. So we finally taught them, you bring, you go up this side, and bring the dirt up the center of the road. You go up the other side, bring the sand up the road, crown it, so it goes somewhere. So we're finally getting those guys, the top of the hills pretty washboardy, 'cause that's, frost sets in there pretty bad. But they're learning how to grade with a float truck.
How often do they do it? Normally, or at our request?
Well, they keep a pretty good eye on it, and, uh, the biggest thing is, uh, if they don't have personnel, they plow out all of our stuff here that's in kind service with the brush plan. And due to turnover in people, uh, there's a lot of guys out there that don't know how to run a plow truck, either a pickup truck or a float truck. And that's why you still see road graders with the color. Float trucks are good for spreading gravel, they're not good for grading roads. 'Cause you can't, you don't have to learn how to prowl the road. So that's what we've taught the DPW over the years, is quit going down the middle and making the center of the road lower than the sides, 'cause all it does is pump the water, then it freezes, then it gets potholes. So we're trying to educate people on how to break, maintain the road. We should have bought the road grader when they sold it.
You could have had a lot of fun with that.
I'd have, sure, a lot of car road.
Most roads that are, are sort of like that. You see this, you know, when you drive, they're, they're like you shake, and that's the reason, so that the water flows.
George, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Did you say the county does it sporadically at our request, or?
The, the, the village maintains our road. Usually when Brian will see his guys coming, they'll say, hey, take the float truck down, straighten out that driveway.
But the county never does it?
And they only does it for chloride. That's through the township. You'll see a bigger, if you see a grader up here, it ain't the village, it's the county.
Right.
They usually grade that twice a year, sometimes only once. They also grade our beach, too. And chloride that, and that's paid for by the township for a whole county chloride, not the village.
I wonder if we could ask them, if that would be something we could ask, to see if, uh, they could do that, include that in our, in their in-kind services? I mean, how much money?
For who's?
For us?
No, for what, what, the DPW or the county road?
The county.
County road machine gonna do it for in-kind services. They're gonna charge you for grader.
Well, even if they charge us, that would be fine too. I mean, first we have to find out how much they're looking for, but we could ask.
Right now, they do it twice a year, they'll charge, because they're paid to chloride out there. So they gotta grade it first, and then chloride it, usually within two days of grading.
Okay, but they are...
And that's how the Davisburg garage...
All right, but they, they do represent us as well. They are part of our county. We are Oakland County, so we can ask, if anything, to see if they could do this, and maybe give us a, give us a price, or, or say to them, when you're out here doing whatever, why don't you, you know, at the same time, you know, get this other stuff done? I mean, all we can do is ask, right? And then, of course...
But as I said, the biggest problem we have out here is we lost all of our ditching. So you grade all you want. If you don't take the water and make it go to a ditch, you're gonna get washed down the hill.
Can, can we get back, though, to the actual motion, to the actual item? Because we're, we're doing the parking lot and the drive in front of the Nature Center.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, unfortunately, the, whatever we do to the parking lot and the driveway, it will impact the road, so...
That's fine.
That's the issue, right? We gotta do the road too, right, when we do this?
Well, it's gotta be done sooner or later. The only thing to say to us about the road up there, 'cause people get stuck, because the bottom is all sand. I used to go up there with a loader tractor and compact it. But now the Little League goes up there and disc golf, everybody's cars are been packing with sand. So it's gotten better. Down here at the bottom of the hill, over by the ball fields, the sand is that deep, that deep. And I used to go up there with a tractor and dump pressure and back drain down to compact it, and go right after the rain, and it helped. But still, it's sand.
Okay, so we've gotta do something about, obviously, I think everybody understands and agrees that we need to do something to improve our parking lot, and we need to do something about the, uh, obviously, the front, uh, drive-in in this area, and that's what the, the, uh, agenda item is all about. So this individual that you, that you brought in, can he talk a little bit about this? I'm sorry. I apologize, I...
I'm sorry?
Go ahead. No, I'm sorry. Can you tell us just your name and, and your...
My name's Robert Montgomery. I grew up in Holly, went to school with Jeff, so, um, I've been out east. I have, uh, my background's in, in architecture from the University of Michigan. I've been building roads and treatment plants there for the last forty years, so...
Do you work for someone right now? Do you work, do you work with a...
I work for me.
Oh, so you have your own company?
I own three construction-related companies out in Pennsylvania.
Oh, okay.
Semi-retired. Jeff's asked me to come and look at the place a couple of times, and we just never found the time to do it. A couple, for me, shoot me, I took a quick drive and ramp. That's water or something. Joe brought up some good points. There's, uh, what I, for me, I can't just come in here and say, you gotta do this, this, and this.
Right, we need to come to...
You know, I would, I would have to come out here and spend some time studying and set up a gray laser, do some different things, to be able to talk to people like Joe and Jeff with the materials that are on site, between the sand and, and different types of stone and clay and everything else here, so... I mean, I'm more than willing to do a study for you. Thank you very much. If you want, you know, I, I could, I donate my time to go do that, and, and come up with a plan, in, in conjunction with a couple of board members. If you guys wanna walk the site with me and go through things like that, I'll gladly help you out, so... You know, I don't have any pearls of wisdom here tonight, but, but, yeah. I'm just, I'm willing, all I'm doing is volunteering and spending my time, so...
Appreciate that, thank you.
Jeff's gonna get me doing that, so...
Any, uh, forethought on equipment that we might be looking at?
You could do a lot of it, either grader or bulldozer, just off the top, you know? You're not gonna need a lot of equipment. The biggest thing is, is to go through and see if you can, uh, recreate and use ditches, or you need pipe... The biggest thing is, is to go through and see if you can, uh, recreate and use ditches or you need piping or something like that. I'd, and I'd have to really take a, a good look at it, but, um, the, the big, the biggest bane with, with, uh, roads or parking lots, something like that is water. So it either you gotta get rid of it or make sure it doesn't get there to begin with. You know, I've seen a couple swales out here that are up above, outside the parking areas, the drive areas, which is a good idea, but they're filling it. And so if you have a hard rain, I know it's coming right over the top of the swales out into your, into your drive area, so I know it's creating a problem. Even though they're, they're in the right spot, they're just not deep enough. So I'd just say it was just a couple of quick observations, but for me, you know, come out here and walk around for a couple of days with some help, with people that know the material, would, would go a long way. And I can make a list of recommendations if you want me to do that, but, um, so. I would say you're gonna end up spending a lot of material and, uh, money on stone, more than anything, you know, I'm not, which once again, your, your stone specs around here, your, your stone here is different than what I'm used to in Pennsylvania, but it's similar principles. You know, a lot, you know, I would tend to go, would go with a heavier stone. We use, out there, we use, uh, what they call the number fours, it's a three or four inch stone, and we pound that into the stuff. You know, into, into the sand. And, and it creates, uh, like a subsurface drainage problem, or issue, not problem, but, uh, um, control for, for the water and stuff like that.
Okay.
Because it's, uh, it's obvious. I think I drove up here in the winter and it was just nothing but ruts, so.
Yes.
So, um-
So again, for me, um, no, go ahead, sir. Anything else you wanna say before I, I should ask the board first if there's any questions, so.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I wanna ask the board if they have any questions. Do they have any questions to you?
Do I?
No, no, them.
If we have questions for you.
So does anyone have any questions?
Shoot.
I, I'm interested that we, we have all these culverts and you said they're full. Can they be washed out? Jeff?
Let me give you a stipulation.
Okay.
Let's get back to in-kind services with village.
Yes.
They have a hydro back truck.
Yeah.
They come out here in two minutes and blow that culvert wide open. In-kind service. Anybody else, we have to get charged for two guys and a back truck. And the county has back trucks. They clean the culverts out on each tonne. They finally redug our ditches. And finally, we have two culverts up there, one going across the street and from across the street over here downhill, and one that comes down the hill on our side. Those last culvert, redug and blown out with a hydro back truck. So our drainage out there is good, but when they put that apron in, they shut off our drainage to the ditches.
Do you have a way to get rid of the waste or a dump site for the waste? Because they have a back truck too, you're saying. So if you blow through the culvert, you could, you could suck everything up with the back truck, but you gotta, is there a place to dump that stuff?
It's not gonna come back to you? No, the, the village would take care of that. They have a, they have a pile.
Okay.
Because they suck up leaves, they suck out their storm sewers all over.
No, you know what I'm saying, you don't put on the side of the hill, and two years later it's back down on your car.
That's why I say about the hill going up to the ball fields. We take all that sand and drag it up the hill, and next time it rains, it goes right back down there and it's back up there. Because we lost our ditches. If we kept it up the hill, we, and got it packed with stone, we wouldn't have the washout to bring the sand back down the hill. So we gotta break down, uh, I think we got four culverts, all four of them. Because our ditches are full, because the sand moves.
And you're gonna have to excavate in front of all the culverts and just load that with, with like riprap or something like that to stabilize it so it doesn't keep happening.
Okay.
There's, there's, it was a myriad of solutions.
Right, so there's-
You really gotta take a long, long look at it.
Right, we do, we, um, so this is not gonna be an easy one, okay? Because we need, we, obviously we need to address this, and this is a, this is gonna be a major project, okay? And, uh, you know, we need to hire a consultant or someone, or, or if you're willing to do this, uh, you know, out of pro bono basis. Again, it's up to us to, to address. And we have to ask you more questions about your background and experience and all of that. So again, that's up, that's up to, to the board. So here, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, just to move this. I-
Well, we, we're not gonna make a motion because it's just discussion right now. It's not, we're not, it's just, I, and I, no action. It's not no action, but we can discuss and you can still, we can come back and, and, uh, and take some further action. So what, what is your concern?
I, I agree with you. There are so many issues that need to be addressed. But I think what Mr. Montgomery offered is some pro bono consultation with Joe, with anyone here, that we can at least develop some, some plans.
That's kinda where I was heading. That's kinda where I was heading, at least to hear something. And if, and if it turns out that you're gonna, you're gonna need more, it's gonna be more time for you than, than what you're, you're thinking it is. And we're gonna have to come back and we have to hire, you know, somebody, you know, more, more professional. But, so here's what I, here's, uh, my suggestion.
Why don't you let him go? You gonna finish?
No, it's not a motion. It's not a motion.
I can, I can give you a, a pretty reasonable idea of what you may need.
Okay.
In, in a short amount of time, so.
Right, because I, I think we, we need to talk to the village to see if they can do something to help uh, with their, at their public works, and Joe's got a good insight with them. So why, why don't we do this, just to help us kind of round this out? Why don't we ask, uh, both, uh, Joe and Jeff and, and the manager, okay, to, uh, to work with you and come up with a plan? And, uh, and then bring it back to the, to the, to the board to make some decisions. How about that?
I think the main thing we, we look at is cause and effect. What is causing the effect that we get? Because that will solve, because that's why Harvey Sorce came out with his backhoe to dig ditches and put in culverts. It worked twenty years ago. Well, we haven't maintained them. You know, if you don't, if you don't, uh, uh, clean your toilet out enough, it quits working. You know, so you gotta, there's maintenance involved. You gotta fix it. And that's what it mainly comes down, this is not rocket science. Once you walk out there and go, oh, you got four culverts? How come they're plugged? You look at the top of the hill and you go, oh, yeah, this is easy. Not, not putting down nothing about roads, but I lived on gravel roads all my life in Oakville County. In my place up north, I had a quarter mile of sand road up a hill too, that I had to maintain with a front end loader tractor. And it was constant. Every time it rained, hit it with a tractor. If I didn't maintain it, I didn't get a quarter mile of road open. So it was something you had to work at all the time. And once I brought a crushed rock and stuff-
Then it started to work. Okay, so let's, uh, we, we need more research. So why don't we ask, again, if, if you guys have any, the rest of the board members, if you think of something different you'd like to do, let's ask, uh, both Jeff and Joe and Mary to sit down and work with you and see what we come up with. And then come, bring it back to us for discussion and see where we go from there. At that time, we'll, you know, how about that?
That works for me.
Works for you?
How about you, Jeff?
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you very much.
I guess, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Can I go paint?
You can go.
You can go. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, woo, that's gonna be a big one, y'all, just so you know. But, um, okay, moving right along to item number, uh, three. This is to discuss the proposal to change the internet service provider for Holly Township Parks and Recreation. So James?
Yes, ma'am, here.
Okay.
Currently, the Holly Township Parks and Recreation is paying approximately a hundred and twenty a month for internet and phone service through AT&amp;T. Um, however, the severe, the service is just way, way inadequate for, you know, modern, modern needs. Particularly for live streaming like we're doing tonight. We're actually only able to do that, um, using my home Verizon five G modem. So, um, the AT&amp;T service we currently have is, I did a speed test, is downloading at one point three megabits per second. And uploading at point two five megabits per second. I know that's a lot of, a lot of mumbo jumbo, uh, but, uh, for comparison, Verizon five G is, uh, currently downloading at about a hundred and eighty megabits per second. And uploading around three point seven. So that, that, that tells me that what we have now is completely inadequate for what we need. Um, I also, I also tested Starlink, uh, being, being, you know, out, out, uh, isolated as we are. Um, however, Verizon is comparable, um, and will cost a lot less to get, to get going in Starlink. Because Starlink, you have to buy upfront costs, about six, seven hundred dollars for the equipment. Verizon does not have that issue. So I am proposing that we transition from AT&amp;T to Verizon five G to enhance our internet capabilities, improve operational efficiency, and can ensure that we can continue offering live streaming meetings for transparency.
And we'll be able to, um, hold on to these meetings and record them and keep them in?
Yes, because, um, we are live streaming to our YouTube channel, which then saves it for, uh, anyone to watch later on down the road.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, all right. So here, here's the issue before I, before I give it out to you all. Uh, James did, did bring, bring this to us, and he took a look at, at three, the current one and two others, okay? So if you all are satisfied with the, uh, with the two vendors that he looked at, that would be fine. If you would prefer that we go look elsewhere, uh, like there's also, uh, Xfinity that we could, we could consider. Uh, if we wanted to, uh, it is up to this board. So let me turn it over to you all right now and see what, what your thoughts are on this matter. Uh, I see question marks on your face here. Cindy?
No, I'm just trying to take in all this information to be honest.
If you look at, here on the, on the, um, on the report that James put together for us. Got it? Yeah, look down at the bottom, and you can see the, the, the comparison to our current one, as, as, as he was saying. So the upload speed looks like it would be a little higher for Starlink than, than it would for Verizon. And, uh, and, and the current, uh, one right now for us is, is sort of comparable, right? Okay, if we were to stick with the, with the same company that we had. And you, you wanna go through these? I don't wanna go, go through these one more time.
Actually, I don't think I have.
Here, you can have.
I got it right here.
Thank you very much. All right, um, the download speed for Verizon, um, starts out at a hundred megabits per second, goes up to three hundred. Um, we're running, like I said, around one eighty with Verizon right now. Um, AT&amp;T, like I said, is about one point three. So, yeah, like a hundred times faster. That, i- if we had anything slower than, uh, the minimum, like Verizon's a hundred megabits per second, we would get like glitchy, um, and the, the video would be freezing, and it'd be a lot of buffering, and it, it would be a mess. Um, the reason that the upload speed on Starlink is higher, however, I'm, I'm trying to take into consideration the needs of the, of the department. I, I don't think, except for streaming live video, that we're gonna need, you know, forty megabits a. I, yeah, we're, we're running what we are right now at less than five. And I, I'm trying to be, you know, fiduciary, uh, you know, financially responsible and only getting what we need. Of course, any, anyone who is, um, on the, on the internet a lot or, uh, does that kind of stuff, you know, faster is always better. But it's also, we take into consideration what we need.
Understand, understand.
Yeah, so I was gonna ask you, what you have in here, you know, the, the best choice for, in terms of speed, affordability and ease of use is Verizon?
Yes. And also Verizon's wireless, um, so there's no need, you know, to run wireless. If, I, I don't even know if, if, um, cable is out this way.
Yes, yes, it is.
I mean, to the, to the building itself.
Yes, it's right outside. I can attest. But you'd have to run the lines.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
And that would be Comcast, and I doubt if that would be free of charge.
Right.
No. Okay. So is everyone satisfied with the, with the, uh, with the two or three that he, that he brought to our attention? Everyone's okay with that for now? So having said that, um, we would, I guess I have to know, how long is our contract with, um, was it AT&amp;T? When can we, uh, end that agreement? Uh, so-
That I'm not familiar with. I think you looked at it.
I, I did look at it. It looks to be a month to month contract.
Month to month, okay.
So.
All right, so let's, uh, see, what is the, is this a motion to approve? Okay, so depending on what the, uh, what the group says here, one of the things I like to do is to ask our, our manager to look into this matter. Well, make sure she gets an agreement with, with whomever we decide. And, uh, and, and obviously, we don't have an exact number here as to how much it's gonna be a month.
Correct.
So we would have to say no more than, as it is right now, which is at one, one twenty? Is that correct? Monthly cost one twenty?
About, about one twenty, yes.
Okay.
So you can go a little higher, just say one thirty, that would cover our budget.
Right.
Okay, well, we have to say this here, if that's what we want, okay, because our budget is one twenty. So if you wanna go a little higher, we can do that, but that has to be included in the motion.
Yeah, not to exceed a certain amount.
Not to exceed, excellent. Okay, so who would like to make that motion?
I motion that we trans, trans, uh, transfer from AT&amp;T to Verizon, um, internet and phone service not to exceed a hundred and thirty a month.
Is there a support?
Support.
Okay, so motion by, uh, by Mr. Wright and supported by Mr. Hutchins. Any other questions? Hearing none? Go call please.
Okay, Joe Hutchins?
Yes.
Jane Vice de Sessa?
Yes.
Jane's right.
Yes.
Jeffrey Earl?
Yes.
And Cindy Earl, yes, thank you.
Very good. Motion approved. Motion passes. Uh, the, I guess the, it's assumption, but I'm gonna ask that, uh, that, uh, James, you work very closely with, uh, with our manager to make sure that this contract gets through, okay?
Absolutely.
And properly assigned, okay? All right. And if there's anything that, that deviates from what was approved today, please bring it back to them.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so moving right along, uh, to item number four. Consider approval of proposal for establishing a website and social media accounts for Holly Township Parks and Recreation. James, you wanna begin?
Sure. One of our biggest challenges we face is the public accessibility to, for information. Uh, currently, we do not have a dedicated website. We only rely on face, our Facebook posts on, uh, Facebook group. Um, this limits how we can share park events, event schedules and the like. Um, to modernize our public engagement, I'm proposing creation of a Holly Township Parks website that will serve as a central hub for information, as well as launch our official social media accounts on platforms like Instagram, X formerly known as Twitter, TikTok and YouTube, well, YouTube, we already have one. Uh, these platforms would allow us to increase transparency, promote events, and to improve community interaction at little to no cost. Uh, the estimated cost for establishing a website is approximately fifteen to twenty dollars per year for hosting a dom, for owning a domain such as hollytownshipparks.org. Um, about a hundred to two hundred dollars a year, depending on where we go, for hosting the website. Be, because of all the information we can actually get out to the public using that website, I think that's a small, small investment to make. By embracing these different platforms, we can ensure that residents are informed and engaged in recreational activities and opportunities that are available, uh, through our department. That, I mean, that would also, that, that would open up so many different avenues for education and, and the like for our residents.
Okay, um, questions, comments from the board? Joe, you have a question mark? No.
You do it really well.
Okay, uh, Cindy, Jeff?
All in favor. I, it's, it's a professional look, and that's something that we definitely-
Really badly, all right, yeah, I do.
I agree.
I agree. We so needed all the for all reasons that you said and just stuff that we needed. So how does that get managed? What kind of?
That, that's a very good question.
Yes, that's.
And I was, I was trying to figure out how I can do this using, you know, proceed, procedure, but contingent on this proposal passing, I believe that we need to create a social media and website content planning workshop that would bring in, you know, whoever would like to volunteer, be it the public, to talk about what they need and what we need to see on the website in different social media platforms and who would manage that. In the beginning stages of trying to come up with this proposal, I was talking to Mary and one of her concerns is that she really doesn't know how to use Facebook all that much. And this workshop would give us the ability to get everyone comfortable and the ability to post, you know, post on the different social media accounts.
So would your training cover appropriate posts and the liability that goes along with?
Yeah, we, I mean, we would have to come up with a procedure, you know, guidelines of what we would allow on the different social media platforms and if we would want to approve the comments before they're posted. I'm not quite sure because like you've said many times, we're new and, you know, I, I don't know all the legalities with, I, I know governmental social media accounts have to remain accessible to the public, so I don't know if we can hide the posts. I, I, I don't think we can.
No, we can't.
But I, I mean, there, there has to be certain guidelines of comments that we would not accept.
That's the biggest thing is we got to get the rules up before we accept it.
Right.
The biggest thing I find nowadays is everybody claims freedom of speech and some things don't come up to us, as you see local TV, there's some lady with some signs down there about different politicians and it's very unworthy of anybody morally to put that in the front yard, but it's freedom of speech. So the rules should, that's what they're saying about this electronic media now is get the rules in before you put it out there instead of going, oh geez, now it's out there, it's all freedom of speech. You got to lock yourselves really close on it and it's tough.
I, I think however is necessary because especially to bring, you know, younger people into, you know, the department to, to show the public the gem that we do have, we have to be out there, we have to be on social media. If, I, I know for the younger generation, if we don't have a social media presence, we don't exist and it, it just, it makes so much sense to be out there, especially being as isolated as we are back here, you know? YouTube videos, TikTok would, would just give everybody the opportunity to showcase what we have back here and the opportunities and the potential, so.
Okay.
Also add on to that, the youth is our future role to maintain what we've preserved for so many years. So we have to go back and these six, seven, eight-year-old kids, they come on TikTok and we're all saying, wow, look what's happening out here, what's this about? Oh, I used to do that when I was a kid. If we don't educate the youth, there will be no, nothing here for them in the future. So we have, that's what our protection is, is education and exposure, positive exposure.
Questions, comments on this side? Joe? No? Cindy?
I mean, I don't.
Why don't you put the mic closer to you, Cindy, so, because we're recording now?
I'm all for the increased social media presence. I just think we really should proceed cautiously with, you know, like Joe had said, you know, establishing, um, back to like what we had talked about possibly, like the mission statement and having the social media presence, making sure that that is really going towards our mission statement because it's so easy, I think, for social media to kind of go off the rails a little bit and for us to direct it to the things that we want to promote here at the parks and the RAC area. So I, I see lots of potential for it. I just say we just have to use your guidance and proceed as cautiously.
And I think that's what the workshop will also would give us a chance to use to collaborate and come up with a set list of guidelines that definitely, you know, would want to follow.
Definitely. I, I like that idea, so if anybody who's watching this, you know, please, how about if we do this? Because it's, this is a big topic. I have, I will tell you that I've done many websites. I'm, I was telling James, I'm proud to say that I'm, I'm the first in the, in this, in this region to, to set up websites. I remember talking to, yes, I'm all, talking, talking to my boss about doing things like having, don't laugh over there, young man, having email, having a website, things like that. That was my proposal to, to the city that I, that I worked for, I won't mention their names. And I said to me, and this is way back, way, way back, I said, I think that our televisions will someday be our phones, just like the Jutsons, you know, remember that? What's Jutsons? Hopefully somebody remembers who the Jutsons are. But I said, that's what's happening. And they just, including my boss, he said, oh, this is just a fad. This is just a fad. It's going to go away. Here we are a hundred years later and we, it's not a fad, it's still there and it's growing. So I think what, from what I hear from you all, it sounds like we're interested, James. Could you come back to us at, at the next meeting and come up with a plan so that we can, you know, get some insight from everybody? But let's set up a plan first because I think everybody's concerned about that and then let's talk about within our, within our board in terms of some of the rules, regulations that, that Joe wants to make sure, because I agree. In some of the communities that I've worked in, we, we can place some limitation, not much, but if they use some of the, you know, words that are not considered proper, we can decide what those are and we can at least blank them out. Or if a person keeps ignoring, then we can eventually stop them, we can send them information. And again, I have to be careful about that, maybe, maybe not. But, but Joe's absolutely right. Let's make the rules first so that we know what we're about to get ourselves into and learn from other folks so that we can, we can do better. But I think everybody's in agreement here. We like the idea of setting up a, a website and getting up a, setting up a, what do you call it? A, a domain. And that, those aren't very expensive, but still, once you get that set up, then we can, we can begin. And then we can get insight from the public, that's, I think everybody agrees with that too. Who knows, we'll see what happens, it may be it just be us and you can look at some of the other websites. I don't expect us to do something super duper fancy because we're, you know, we're just learning, we're just beginning. But as we, as we proceed and we move on, I mean, you'll be able to see how some other communities are doing things such as they can electronically apply for permits or they can electronically apply for registration for, you know, parks or whatever it is that we do or if we have events. But with all that, having said all that, that yes, it'll make it a little faster, easier for us, it comes with a lot of responsibilities. We have to be very careful because we also open ourselves up. And then, you know, that's where you get the concerns about people coming into our website unexpected. What is the proper word I'm using here? I don't think we want it to happen here, but.
Right, hacking.
Hacking, yes. Hacking is a big issue nowadays, so we have to be very careful what we place on our, on our site because we don't, obviously we don't want that to happen. And that can happen, no matter how hard we try. So we have to put in the proper firewalls and things like that. Yes, sir?
Over the years, I always promoted positives, whether it's a meeting or if it's an event or it's a posting or anything else, I've always reflected on positives. I want people to come out of this meeting feeling positive and happy that they were here to be part of it and that's what we promote. I don't promote the negatives. Take your negatives down the road where somebody cares because we don't. We promote positives. And I think if we teach that to the younger groups and everybody coming through, they'll have good feelings about what's happening here. They'll say, man, you know, I didn't agree with what they had to say, but, you know, it was very enlightening, they're coming out with a positive then. Well, I didn't know that. I was taught this or here's what they said. Begin with facts, not with, with biases and stuff. So I think that we always, I've always tried to promote positives, no matter what board it is or whatever else. Because I want you to go home to feel good tonight, everybody that's here, say, hey, well, I kind of didn't like that, but you know, it's a pretty good idea and let's try it. It's positive. Movement is positive forwards.
Okay. All right, so we've got our work cut out for us and I agree, let's, let's get started. So thank you so much for the proposal, very well done and we'll, we'll come back and give us a report. Is there anyone else who's interested in working on this matter? Cindy? Anyone? Joe? Or we should just let James do it?
I, I'm more than willing.
Okay, thank you, James.
I'll obviously help with that.
Obviously, yeah.
You're always willing, or I'm always willing, you're always open to, or welcome to reach out, you know, I'm definitely, I don't know very much about that, I was just saying.
Well, we're going to learn, we're going to learn.
But, we're going to learn, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to learn. And I just want to make sure that the board feels like, you know, they're all part of this and that's so important. So we've got the roads to, to Jeff and Joe, so we got the, the web stuff to, to James. So if it's okay, Cindy, can, can we ask you to, to work with James on this?
For sure.
And of course the manager. Everyone here needs to know this, we work through the manager, okay? And she's going to be, hopefully we'll make it easy for you and not harder, okay?
It's fine.
And, and we'll see, and that's our goal here with all of us, to make things easier for her, okay? And we, we will take our skills and abilities to help her get there. Yes, sir?
I, I did want to say that even, even though that the website itself and the other social media platforms are going to take a little bit long, longer, we do still have our Facebook group that, that is active on Facebook and I will be getting with Mary to give her access to that and we can continue to put forth postings on Facebook so we keep the public informed.
Right, and, and I, I understand that. So for those of us who are computer illiterate, you do know, we do have a Facebook page, right? You, you know that, okay? And, and, but we may need to address that a little closer so that we can address some of Joe's concerns about negativity. Now, we don't expect everybody to agree with everything we do and, and, and people have the right to say and, and all we ask is that they maybe perhaps use a little different tone and, and don't just scream, shout and yell and instead tell us what your concerns are.
We have to be civil.
Be civil, okay.
That's it.
That's the definition.
You could be right or wrong, but you still got to be civil, you know?
And that's hard, believe it or not, to, to say be civil because everybody has a different definition of what that is. So the, the, the good news is here is that once we establish what the rules are, then the manager more than likely will be the person that will probably be given that, that decision. And, and I think some of it should be common sense, it should be, but you never know, there's always somebody out there that respectfully disagrees with us and, and that, that's, that's how it is. And we're going to have people saying, what a, who did you appoint to be the chair? You know? So, so we'll take it one step at a time, okay? All right, so let's get, get started and bring it to us, you and Cindy and, and the manager, and then come together and bring us some more information as to steps that we have to take, okay?
And wherever we want to figure we can do a workshop, let's get it going.
Yes, and the workshop, especially the workshop, yes.
And we can get this culminated and get it moving down the road.
And James, we're going to really, you know, rely on your help here, sir, if you don't mind?
Oh, not at all.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Okay, so are there any questions before I move on? Okay, finally, to the toughest question. Item number six. Discuss the work hours and pay for Holly Township Parks and Recreation staff. Now, I'm, I'm going to move this over to, to the manager just to give us a, a brief report in terms of what is it that we need to do here, okay? So.
Okay. Well, there's a couple of different things. You've been referring to me by your manager, but as far as I know, I'm still the interim manager. So that's one thing that, you know, if, if you want to, you need to change that. The other thing is, is that since I've taken this position in mid-October of 2024 to current, I've been restricted to ten hours a week and thirteen dollars an hour, which is the same pay that I was making when I was working as a beach person. So unfortunately, I've been donating probably more time than I have been getting paid for. My W2 last 2024 for the beach and for being the interim manager for two and a half months was two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. And I did ask Rachel to give a report on what I have made this year since January to current and that is, you see. So unfortunately, it just never made it onto a previous agenda and that was why I brought it forward, that I would like to see it on this agenda and I guess I'll leave it up to you whether you want to do anything about it, but.
And, and I'm sorry I put you on a tough spot, Mary, because this is, this obviously will affect you and, and others and so we need to, and I, I thank you for, for being willing to, to put up there. That's not, that was not our intent at all. We just need to make some decisions, as she said. I'm, we don't make, we, this item is for discussion only, so at the next one, I would like for us to, to make some decisions and to hopefully appoint a, a person final to this, to this position or if the board wishes to continue to go look elsewhere, then, then we could do that or, or just, you know, make a motion to, to go with Mary. I think looking at everybody's face, just surprising everybody, I think it's very much supportive of, of Mary. I, I think that's what I see, am I wrong? Majority here, so.
Or you say, yeah?
To continue and to make it more, make Mary's position permanent or make her, you know, permanent. I think from what I see in the faces that that's kind of where we're heading. If not, then, then we need to start looking so that we can proceed with that. Again, just a straw vote, it looks like that's where we're heading. James, you want to say something before I go any further?
Yeah, I, I actually would like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can talk about making Mary's position permanent tonight.
We get back to parliamentary procedure again and what's on the agenda?
Well, so I appreciate what you want to do, but Joe's right, it's, it's not that simple. Can we, we come back and make some, some more formal decisions later? Because I know this is something, I mean, there was no backup information for this other than we know we need to look at this. I'm praying that you're going to stay with us.
I will do it one more month.
Okay.
You didn't say which month, though.
One more month as in April.
Oh, okay. I just want to clarify that.
Well, we have to, we have to meet again, so.
And Mary, which year?
I like it.
Well, you better believe I won't be here the next year if it doesn't come up in April.
I would like to make one comment about Mary's duties here.
Yes, sir.
Me and Mary have worked with the rest of the crew, which is our three Michigan works and our two maintenance people. Her and I have worked together with all these folks for the last two months. We got a lot of stuff done legally, a lot of stuff, we took a lot of loose ends, got them all going, got things done and Mary, I've, I've told her, told her, I goes, ten hours? You can do that in two days.
And a half.
Part-time in two days. And I told her, I said, by the time you go to Rachel's to take documentation, to go down and get some checks signed, there's five hours. So I understand where she's at because I've been with her here at this place, but holy mout and the pain. The other thing is, being a municipal thing, is we always used to go out and you had to put out for applications, which we done before and some, you know, it was quite, quite an eye-opener. So I guess we have to find out if we have to go out and put this out, position out for bids, what the job description is, what the pay is, and I guess we have to check that legally if we have to do that. legally if we have to do that, that's what's happened before, and we had to change the date.
I will say, though, that they previously did do that, and did get applications, I never saw them, so I don't know, so whether you feel you need to do it again.
Yeah.
But it has been done, and that, but the other thing is, is I would also like to consider, have the board consider, a possible pay increase for our maintenance person Mel, because he actually has worked with us well at the beach and here, and is wanting to continue. The other thing is, is he has many more skills than we originally planned for him at the beach, he has been able to get a lot of our equipment that has not run for years up and running, and, you know, he's willing to do a lot of things, he's very congenial to work with and everything else, but I think because he does have another job, and, you know, he's going to continue at the beach, but he likes working here as well, that I think in a sense of just encouraging him to stay with us, that maybe a pay raise for him as well would be in order.
And I've worked with Mel all winter, and Zach, and I'm legislative, not administrative, so I go up to Mel, I say, Mel, I gotta take, we gotta get rid of that tree out there. When do you wanna handle it? I said, I'll take it down, when do you wanna call the shots? When do you wanna do it? Not me, it isn't up to me, I'm not there to direct people, so I left it all up to Mel. When you wanna do it, Mel, then you let me know, when you got it ready for the next one. So I let him schedule his own work, because he's the one that's responsible for it, not me, I'm just there to help him, and I say, if you want that, like this last one I took down on a Sunday, he cleaned it up on a Monday, I talked to him on a Friday, he goes, when you want that tree done? He goes, well, I'd like to clean it up Monday. I called him up Sunday afternoon, timber! So it's taken care of, so I've worked with Mel, and Mel knows more than everybody thought he knew, and I've been teaching him how to drop a tree, and with his assistant, how to be a brush man, how to get things done productively in a short amount of time, so both of them are very capable people. And I leave it up to them to schedule their own time, so they can figure out, okay, we gotta clean this, we gotta do this, they work off their own times, and they get it done.
Currently, he works generally two afternoons, and Zach usually helps him, because he's good for the manpower. And they've been doing a lot of tree removal, a lot of brush, and some other things, but when he is working at the beach over the summer, and he has also already agreed to do mowing here, which is gonna be a big project, I expect his hours will go up, so.
Was he hired at the same time as Zach?
He was, he is, he was hired at the same time that I was at the beach. Zach is a high school student, and so I don't know, you know, he's assisting Mel, he's not actually doing, you know, even though he's doing a lot of work, he's not doing the actual parts of it, so I don't know that it's necessary to do both, I just think, you know.
I just was wondering if they were hired at the same time, or, you know, like what their employment?
They were hired at the same time, but different skills.
Yep.
Okay. So my only concern is this, well, lots, big concern, budget, okay? Big, big concern, budget, I wanna look at the, we want, we need to look at the budget to see what we can and cannot do, okay? I need to make sure that we look at the personnel process, to see if we need to go out again and look for that, and then I need to look in to see how much more we can afford to be able to increase, that's why I know where you're heading, I said, let's stop there, because we need some work to do. So if it's okay with you all, that we are a working board, may I please work with the manager and come back to you all, and see where we find out about how we're gonna handle this, and we have, we, we're new, I'm learning, there's so many things we still have to do. We have to not just do the mission statement, but I'd like to do a vision statement, where we have goals and objectives, where we're heading, I prefer that, call it a strategy or action plan, but that's in the future, I wish we could do it now, but it's time-consuming, and we'll get there, we'll get there, we need to prioritize, I need to know, so that our manager knows, or it doesn't matter whether interim or not, Mary, we have to give direction. As a former city manager, I can tell you that the first thing I asked the city council to do was, where do you want me to take the city? I know how to manage, but I need to follow your priorities, so where are we heading? So I would like for us to take a look at that, you know, in the very near future, to develop a strategic action plan, which also includes the mission statement, okay? Because the mission statement has to match the goals. Now, the goals can be for five years, and we have to accomplish them, it gives tight deadlines to it, they just don't go forever and ever, we have to accomplish them, and remember, it's, the word plan is in there, so they can change, okay? But every year, we look, we visit them, and we say, okay, is this still doable? You know, we promised to put a swimming pool out there, I'm just being facetious, but, you know, no, Jane, we couldn't do it because X, Y, Z, so then we move on to something else, okay? So I'd like for us to take a look at that.
That was included in that envelope that I gave on Thursday.
So, but we need to update, I think Jeff has made a comment at an earlier meeting that we need to update those.
Mission statements.
Those, the mission states and the policies and things like that, they need to be updated, so we need to do that. Now, having said all this, I'm gonna say the word that I know a lot of people aren't crazy about, but I would like for us to get some type of legal assistance, I said it, I think that's important, oh, we have visitor.
That's true.
Hey, it's nature.
Look who just dropped in.
That's true, leave him alone, I'm gonna take him outside. I used to save a lot of bees going to the office, but, so please, if it's okay with you all, unless someone else wants to do this, as your chair, I would like to work with our interim manager and come back with a proposal, so that we can look at the budget and see what is doable, and then make some recommendations, and the other, only other thing that I ask is, Mary, I'm gonna need more than a month, I think we can do a couple of things, but if you could just please bear with us, I think you'll be happy with the outcome, but I can't promise that, I'm almost certain that, and in some, in some communities, okay, once you have the rules established, if we feel that, like many times, you know, that's why we have succession plans, so that we can, you know, give other people the opportunity to move in, or we can have plans if we see that there's a person that, you know, we feel quite certain that even if we went outside, you know, it wouldn't change our minds, you know, we would still have to place her on some type of probationary period, so that she can show us that she can do it, and things of that nature, but we don't have any of those things set, and I don't, and I know here, you know, we have a lot of work cut out for us, so many of these policies need to be reviewed by legal minds, to tell us whether or not we are heading that direction, so what are your thoughts about that? Is that, you think it's a good start, we come back, Mary, don't leave us, give us some time?
I'm just saying that, if anything, I would like to be paid for the hours that I'm actually working at some point, right, you know, soon, because enough is enough, six months.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Of spending more time, donating time to this park, than what I'm actually getting paid for is enough.
Well, again, once we set up our policies, I mean, there is, we could look at, and I know some of, some of your expressed concerns, but we could make it into a permanent or a part-time position, because I know you have some restrictions too.
Yep.
And so we have to think about that, if we make it a part-time or a full-time position, then there's no hours there, however, we can give her compensatory time, so that she can take time off, if she needs additional time off, more so than the automatic holidays that we're gonna follow, and things like that, and vacation, so.
The main thing I'd like to see settled, we can take this piece, we don't have to do the whole enchilada.
No, there's just.
I would like to see her compensated for her actual work hours, pay her for when she's been here, then we'll discuss her permanent positions and everything else, and pay structure, but pay her for when she's here, she's volunteered enough time over and above what anybody should be, and her, I, like I say, I've been here, and I've witnessed it.
Okay.
And enough's enough, Mary.
Okay.
Enough's enough.
But we need to come, I need to come up, how much is this gonna cost us? Can we afford this? Okay? So I, we need to look at that, all right? And we need to, I know we have copies of our budget.
Just in case.
But we need to look at this very carefully, it would be easy for us just to say yes, but it's not that simple, okay? So Jeff, you walked out for a little bit, is that okay? Do you have any qualms if I sit down with, as your, as your chair, sit down with Mary and come back with a recommendation at the next meeting in April, and see where we can go? And I've listened to some of your comments, and look at possibly paying her for the full hours, and then also looking at doing some times for, on things that we need, but for me, one of the, one of the priorities that I think we need is we do need some legal assistance to help us make some things, because I need help, well, she's gonna need the help, to take a look at contracts, whenever we do that, take a look at personnel, HR, that's gonna be so critical, you know, it's not that simple, and then I'd like to take a look at our liability insurance, to see, make sure that we are all properly insured and covered and all that good stuff, because things can happen, and so that's stuff that I gotta look at.
We're supposed to be bonded and insured for our actions, so if somebody, something happens, and they say, say somebody goes running down the sled hill, they have to sue all of us, because of negligence, or whatever else, they're gonna sue all of us, but we're insured and bonded against that, so it doesn't take us out of our own financial plane, because we are parks and wrecks, so that's something you really wanna look at, go, okay, just like we do for the contracts for Little League, how much you insured for, we gotta know what our protection is too, if it's up to date, or whatever else, I don't know, we've never been sued.
Don't say that word.
So, Mary, back to your hours part, is there a way to, like, I hate to regulate it down to, but can you just like do hours that you are working, like signing in, signing out, so we can, because, yeah, like when you're working and you're putting in eight, how, I don't know how your days go, but are you documenting it anymore?
I am documenting it, however, it's kinda difficult in times because of our computer situation, a lot of times I have to do things here, but then I have to take it home and have to do it there, because my printer works with my computer, which I struggle with here, and, you know, so there's a lot of things that are.
Bleeding out, all kinds of different frames.
Yeah, I mean, that's why you've gotten things at ten o'clock at night for, you know.
That's something that we have to work on, our equipment, need to make sure that it matches our printer, need to make sure that it runs efficiently, effectively, we have so much to do.
Because I really would love to see Mary not working from home, you know?
Of course.
If it's because of printer situations, if we can kind of figure that out, so that your time when you're not here is, you know, it's just a little bit more.
That'd be great.
No, I agree, I agree.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
One suggestion over the years, and you're probably able to explain with this, you know, Mary, a lot of people are working at home now and at the office, I'm gonna use the old word, desktop audit.
Oh, okay.
You know what that is?
Yes, but go ahead, explain.
Well, you can, and that's what Mary can do, we can ask her to do desktop audits, just copious notes, it doesn't have to be, you know, a timestamp or anything else, you give, that's what we used to do with different things here, was audits, like at the beach, how many people were attending, they come in, how many came in, how many were male and female, how many were kids, how many were adults, to see the usage of the beach, desktop audit. I know it's a little bit of work, but Mary's been doing that pretty much, I spent two hours here, I spent two hours at home doing this, desktop audit, it tells you who are ours.
And of course, the computer records when you're in, using the computer to the time that you're out, and again, I don't want her to be using her personal computer, that's something that is a big no, it is a big no.
And we're also, you know, adding to the things, you know, we haven't said it a couple of times, well, Mary will be, like, her manager will be, so her list of things to do, I mean, just talking about the social media aspect, you know, I mean, that seems like we should actually be adding how many hours a week would the interim manager be doing something on social media, you know, and kind of list it out, but like.
That's what desktop audit does, it isolates it down to what she's doing, at what time, and how many hours, or how many minutes or hours, so if she's out looking for invasives, because we told her, hey, we need to say, clear it out, you're worse than invasives, well, she spent two hours out here tangling trees, so a desktop audit shows what her whole scheme of thing is.
Well, that's kind of, these are my bibles.
Exactly, there you are.
There's a lot of stuff, details in here, of what have been done, but, you know, as far as a desktop audit, sometimes even that is difficult.
Yeah.
Because you're doing like three or four things, but they're doing them all at the same time.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, not as easy as just saying, you know, I'm gonna spend two hours doing this, and then you end up with this, 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 and this during that two hours, that was not expected, so.
I know, we're making it more difficult for ourselves, I think we're just gonna have to sit down and figure it out, and come up with a good solution, because we wanna make it easy for the staff to be able to address them, we also wanna make sure that they're properly paid, and, you know, compensated, and all that good stuff.
And feel good about being here.
And feel good about being here.
Because at some point, when you aren't feeling as appreciated, it gets to be not as fun anymore, you know, and we don't want that.
No. Definitely, we want all our staff to be happy, we wanna make sure that they come back, and that they feel, you know, good to be here, I've had the privilege of meeting some of our staff already, and they're all, you know, good people, happy to be here, happy to work, and I'm very pleased with their attitudes, I can sit here, and the minute somebody walks in the door, everybody rushes to the door to go, you know, greet them and welcome them in, so we have our work cut out for us, but I think we're all set, so if with your, without any issues, I'd like to work as your chair with our manager and come back to you with some solutions, and as Joe suggested, you know, we are gonna have to take it a little bit at a time, the attorney thing is something that's a big priority, so that may come sooner than some of the others, but I will come back, and we will come back with some costs, and I'll look at the budget, and if anybody else wants to work with me on this, I'd be happy to do so, yes, sir?
One other comment about employees, me and I counseled different things when I was on village councils still, we had police, we had fire, we had DPW, we swarmed treatment, and I was always of the thing that these policemen and these people that work for the village for less money didn't go someplace more to make money, because they wanted to be in the holler, and I always said, you gotta pay good to keep good, because if you don't pay good, they take it personally, and they say, I'm going to the Old County Sheriff's, I'm going to Fett, I'm going here and there, who's gonna replace them? We always had loyal employees, the majority of them in the holler, because we paid good and treated them right, you pay good, you keep good, and it still wasn't Old County Sheriff wages, but it was here, it was local, they were appreciated, and we paid them good and took care of them, that's what it's all about, I don't care where you're at.
Okay. Okay.
I'd just like to say that I think, in my opinion, it's not real fair to Mary, that we even extend another thirty days before she gets adequately compensated, because she does put in her time, the recourse would be that she works ten hours, and that's it, because that's what she was brought in, that's not gonna serve us well either, maybe at the end of thirty days, there might be an option to compensate her with something as a solution, because again, it's not fair.
It's not fair.
She's extended her time from interim to now she's still interim, and, you know, it wasn't her fault that this whole process got extended, it just, I wanna make that statement.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. I agree with you.
I appreciate that, Jeff.
Yes. My only concern is financial, okay? I want to see, and I need to come up with a cost. How much is this going to cost us? Otherwise, you know, we would've already put something here, but we need to do a little bit of work. And Mary, I can assure you, I think from all of us listening to hearing us, we will do it as quickly as we can. So at least it's on the radar, and we know we gotta do this quickly. But in the meantime, you have been contracted for 10 hours. Please, 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 try to stay within those 10 hours. Document, as you've been doing, the, for the hours that you go over. And I'm gonna leave it to your discretion, okay? Please, if you can.
Well, I've already been told if I go over, I cannot charge for them.
Who said this?
The keeper. Like, if you go over.
Well, that's why we have to approve this.
There's no way to go back.
You can't get retro.
You cannot get retro.
Okay, that was what I was just gonna ask.
Well, that's why, that's why we need legal, to see if we, they can help us.
It's not possible.
On that, on that.
On wages. That's what I was told, so.
Under some.
There's gotta be some kind of work.
Maybe the word is bonus.
That could be it.
You can't give bonuses either. You can't give bonuses.
Yeah?
No.
Why not?
We used to give our beach help a bonus. Okay, let's give all of our beach people $10, our lifeguards, let's give them a bonus. Can't do that. You can't give bonuses. So what we did was, we took them out, had pizza, went bowling or something, or went to a water park, or went, did that. You can't give bonuses. Now, when we used to pay our director, it was cost of living raise, cost of living raise, 5%. Can't give her a bonus. It's against, it's against the law here.
I've never, well, I know that in some communities you can, okay? But again, it's all written out. That's why I'm asking for a little bit of time. Under union contracts, you can stipulate that you can't go back, things of that nature. So again, I need, we need some legal minds here to say what we can and cannot do, because we don't wanna go backwards. You're obligated to work no more than 10 hours. But I ask that you keep track of anything that you work over, over those hours, and make sure that you check, at least with me, how about that? Check with me when you do go over, and we'll sign, so that there's another person that knows that this is what you're doing. And I know it's a bit of a hassle, but I think it's, until we can quickly resolve this, then it'll help in terms of having some sort of accountability and transparency, okay? So it's a start, and I know this is something that, like I said, we've got a lot of work to do here, ladies and gentlemen, and this is the first one. And we're just beginning the discussion here, because I didn't think that we were ready to make some decisions. We need to find out what we can do legally, and we need to find out what, how much and what we can afford. Have to look at our budgets, and of course, we have to look at our staff. So, go ahead.
I think, and I feel like we all want to be fair and want to make this right, you know? So I, hopefully, with the investigation, we can find out, you know, the soonest possible path to that end.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Now, one other rule is, we have scheduled meetings. Anything else like a workshop or a special meeting, we have to post. To call a special meeting or a workshop, it's either by the chair or by two commissioners. So there's your options. The only, the only thing we get paid for, we only get paid for workshops. We only get paid for special meetings where decisions are made at regular scheduled meetings.
Thanks, Joe. That's a really good point. We may have to have a special meeting here, so that we can make some decisions.
We don't have to wait a month. You know what I'm saying, folks?
Thank you, Joe.
So it's up to you.
That's an excellent point.
The rules of procedure. Has to be posted 18 hours before the meeting. The time you post that and the date you post it. You post it at 3:00 in the afternoon, 18 hours before the meeting.
Got it.
That's the rules. So that's what you're, that's what you guys can do legally, a special meeting.
Okay.
It can be pulled for anything.
So, again, not voting, but do I hear more or less the consensus that you're willing to do special meeting to address this matter? Yes?
I would not be opposed to that.
Let's take your business, no matter what it takes.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanna say one thing. I wanna put my voice to everyone else, that I think is completely unfair to Mary, to expect her to continue to do the work she's been doing here and only paying her for 10 hours. Now, she was told that she can't go over that 10 hours, and if she does, she will not get, you know, retro pay. So it's just.
Let's figure out how we can do this. That's why I need, I may need, I'll come back and say, "Let's talk to an attorney," but we'll have to make a vote.
Right.
And give me that permission to do that. My understanding is that we've used the council from the township for some of these types of things, so we may go there eventually, though. Again, I don't know, we need to discuss this again and maybe look at either doing some sort of agreement with them or hiring our own. So, and again, it's not for, again, we've got a lot of work to do here. We have to research this a little bit further to see how that's gonna be done, but we do need some legal assistance. Okay? All right. So I'll do my best to move it as quickly as we can, so.
Thank you.
We can address this, all right? Okay. Any other comments, questions? And thank you, everybody.
One comment.
Yes, sir.
For all you newbies, it's 9:00.
Yes, it's 9:00.
We're way past our 1-hour schedule.
I know. I'm sorry, Jeff.
We got a lot of work done, and it's okay. But usually, now, an hour and a half, everybody does their homework. We don't overload everything else, take one thing at a time and get it done, get it done. This is the toughest meeting you'll ever have, is your first one. Guaranteed. So thank you very much, you new folks, for sticking it out past 9:00.
I'm hungry.
Usually, it's an hour, an hour and a half, you know, we have more things, or presentations. But usually after an hour, everybody's kind of glassy-eyed, ready to go home.
I can see our audience over there.
So thank you very much for all your patience, you newbies. Me and Jeff are used to some of these two, three-hour meetings going, "Holy Beryl."
But I'm so glad, I'm so glad.
We're getting through it. We're getting through it. That's amazing. We made, we're still going forward. Don't get in our way. De Ia Coca. I like that name. That's my comment for tonight.
All right. Hearing no other comments, this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
At one time.